Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, November 17th, and we will start with roll call.
Chair Fryerman Hunt.
Here.
Vice Chair Spears.
Present.
Commissioners Buckles.
Here.
DeSai.
Here.
Hinton.
Here.
Hut.
Here.
And Pevsner.
And the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's approved. And the next is approval of the minutes of November 3rd, 2016. Anyone have comments on that? No? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's passed. And then this is, at this time, anyone in the audience can make a comment on any item which is not on tonight's agenda. We ask you to limit your comments to no more than four minutes and provide your name and address. Seeing no one rushing forward, everyone will have another opportunity to do that at the end of the meeting. And now we will move to the first item on the public hearing, Municipal Code about second units.
Yes, I will be giving the presentation this evening. The Planning Commission will consider a Municipal Code text amendment to Chapter 17.22, second units. The purpose of the Municipal Code text amendment is to achieve compliance with Senate Bill 1069, which was signed by Governor Brown on September 27th, 2016. Senate Bill 1069 expands a property owner or developer's ability to build a second residential dwelling unit on their property, and simultaneously restricts discretionary and regulatory authority by the local jurisdiction on such development. The Senate bill takes effect on January 1st, 2017, and existing local ordinances that fail to include or are in conflict with these new provisions on that date, the new law goes into effect are considered null and void. The nature of the amendments will require the City of Sierra Madre to adopt an ordinance before December 31st, in order to avoid the existing second unit ordinance that's currently in place from becoming null and void. This, again, is the reason that this agenda item is before the Planning Commission as a public hearing, with the action to consider approving a resolution this evening as opposed to a discussion item that we typically have. So this item is scheduled to go before City Council on December 13th, 2016, as an urgency ordinance. Senate Bill 1069 introduces new development requirements which are included in the proposed draft urgency ordinance, which addresses various areas, including allowable floor area, parking requirements, fire sprinkler requirements, utility connections, garage conversions, and short-term rentals. So I wanted to go through some of the changes that were introduced by Senate Bill 1069, and whether or not our current code complies with those changes, and then we'll go through the red line changes. So the allowable floor area currently imposes a maximum size, Sierra Madre Municipal Code imposes a maximum size of 800 square feet for a second unit. This code section will need to comply with the new regulatory restriction, which establishes allowable floor area thresholds, both for attached and detached accessory dwelling units. Attached accessory dwelling units may not exceed, this is the new code, SB 1069, 50% of the existing living area, including a basement and attic of the single-family dwelling, or 1,200 square feet, whichever is less. It's a little vague in terms of what including a basement and attic really means, but ultimately they're increasing the square footage up to 1,200 square feet for an attached accessory dwelling unit, and the same would be for a detached unit, 1,200 square feet. Parking, currently the Sierra Madre Municipal Code prohibits tandem parking. The SB 1069 provisions permit parking in setback areas and through tandem parking, so this section of the code will need to be amended to comply with these new restrictions. Fire sprinklers, SB 1069 restricts local agencies from imposing fire sprinklers for construction of an attached accessory dwelling unit, unless it also requires them for the existing single-family residence. And if the fire code requires sprinklers for new residential structures, we believe that the new detached accessory dwelling unit should be required to have this safety feature, even if the primary structure does not. And this is the common practice that the fire marshal currently imposes, and we anticipate continuing this practice, and therefore we would still be in compliance with the proposed provisions. Utility connections, fees, and capacity changes as identified in SB 1069. The Sierra Madre Municipal Code already prohibits separate meter connections for a second unit, and therefore we are still in compliance. SB 1069, however, does allow a separate meter for a detached ADU, but not for an attached accessory dwelling unit. Setbacks, specifically SB 1069 is addressing garage conversions, and it eliminates setback requirements for accessory dwelling units located in a converted garage, and establishes maximum setbacks of no more than five feet from the side and rear lot lines for an accessory dwelling unit constructed above a garage. Sierra Madre Municipal Code will need to be amended for consistency with this restriction specific to garage conversions. I think we are going to be proposing a workaround in some of these issues in the ordinance. Height, our code currently, Section 1722.060, currently establishes height limitations for second dwelling units, which limits a second detached unit to 12 feet. Under current code, this provision may be exceeded if we, if an applicant acquired a conditional use permit, and that would be consistent with the R1 for a single-family second unit or second-story additions, or new two-story units or houses. So applying this requirement over the existing second-story garage also would require a conditional use permit under a current code for a second unit. However, the issue here is that SB 1069 states that even second-story units above a garage or detached or detached structure or attached to a residence has to be handled through a ministerial process, so that would be in conflict with our current code of requiring a conditional use permit. So we are proposing a couple things that could modify this. First, staff is proposing to amend the height of a detached accessory dwelling unit from 12 feet to 15 feet. We're doing this to be in conformance with the height of accessory structures, including sheds. A shed could be 15 feet in height, so why is an accessory dwelling unit set at 12 feet? So we're proposing to make that 15 feet. By codifying this restriction, it will effectively eliminate the ability to construct a two-story detached second unit. It would also prohibit the ability to build a second unit above a garage and convert any existing second-story on a structure to a second unit because the exterior stairway structure and independent entrance into that building would have to be, would be, end up, would end up being higher than 15 feet as well. So we think that's a remedy in terms of still complying with code, establishing the maximum height limit, and any second unit would not be able to be generally in compliance because they would exceed that 15-foot height, including through a stairway access, exterior stairway.
That's new units constructed.
That would be new, yes. The last item that was introduced under Senate Bill 1069 provides provision for a local agency to restrict the ADU if rented for a period, or periods longer than 30 days. And this provision will be included in the amendment as a new Section 1722.085 rental restrictions. So what's really before the Planning Commission this evening? You do have two alternatives before you. One is to recommend to the City Council adoption of the Urgency Ordinance, 1383 U, amending Chapter 17.22, second units, pursuant to Resolution 16-11, in conformance with Senate Bill 1069. The second is the same language with the exception of, with revisions by the commission. So at this time, I would like to go through the red line version of the draft ordinance identified as Exhibit B. That is included on the dais.
Vincent, before, before we go into the weeds of the, I'd like to ask a question, if I could get sort of a general idea of the interpretation of SB 1096 with regard to discretionary review, because there's, it seems to me sort of a conflict, and I'd like some expert advice on how to handle this. It seems like the general idea of SB 1096 is that there's quite a bit of restrictions on localities regulating more stringently than their underlying code. So basically, the underlying code for residential, for single-family would apply to the second unit. But then it also says these have to be approved ministerially. So we have situations in our underlying code where you would need a CUP, or you'd need a hillside development permit, or some other kind of discretionary review. So I guess the question is, if someone tried to build a second unit that, under our existing code for regular single-family, not special for second units, but, you know, just regular for single-family or hillside, whichever, that required a CUP or hillside development permit, is that okay for us to have, to do that kind of discretionary, require that discretionary review for the second unit?
Well, logically, it should be. It really should be. But that's not what, that's not what the statute says. And until somebody brings that test case forward to argue that even though the statute says, under no circumstances will it be discretionary, and anything that you have on the books that is contrary to this doesn't apply. Regardless of that, it's still a very rational argument to say, yes, but, in, for example, our hillside development is a sensitive area, and any building there requires design review, a conditional use permit. It's a discretionary process, and so why, why can someone build a second unit with no discretion when the primary unit requires the CUP, et cetera, et cetera? And we don't know the answer to that. We don't know what a court would, would say to that, because the statute's pretty clear, or, well, it's plain. I won't call it clear, but it's plain. It says you just can't apply any discretionary process, and you also cannot apply any standards that are inconsistent with the few standards that the state has imposed. But they've also, by the same token, they've left local jurisdictions to impose some of your own standards. For example, you can still have a height restriction, or choose not to. That's been left to your discretion. So one way to get around the concern, if we don't want to be the test case, that someone might say, I want to build a two-story, a second unit, and I don't have to get the CUP. I can just do it. And in order to not be that test case, the way to get around that is to say, well, we are allowed, as one of our standards, to have a reasonable, rational height restriction, and 15 feet is rational for a second unit, because it's the same height as any accessory structure, and it is an accessory dwelling unit. And 15 feet's as high as you're going to get, and there is just no provision to go any higher.
Doesn't that have the perverse effect of SB 10, what, 1016, 1096? 69, 1069, sorry, of, which the whole point is to make it easier to build second units. We have just made it harder to build second units in Sierra Madre.
Well, I would say, I would argue that we haven't made it harder to build them. We've just made it, it used to be that you had the option, the opportunity, was never guaranteed. But you had the opportunity to configure your second unit in a two-story configuration, or even put a second story on garage, if it made sense. But you needed a conditional use permit to do it, and that means we could say no. With this change, we can't say no to an additional unit as long as your lot is large enough to accommodate one. They did not take that discretion away, the state did not take that discretion away from a local agency. So as long as you've got a lot that's big enough to have both the primary structure and the second unit, and, you know, you're not exceeding the floor area ratio coverage, then you can build a second unit as a ministerial matter up to 1,200 square feet in size. But you, but if you agree to the 15-foot height restriction, and you don't want to allow someone to get a freebie on throwing a, you know, a two-story structure in a neighborhood where nobody else gets to do that without a CUP, then that's the only limitation. But otherwise, ministerially, it's actually easier to get a second unit permit.
But the, but, but the places where you can put a second unit now are more constrained.
Well, they're, they're actually, they're no more constrained than they ever were. They did, the state did leave the local agency with the ability to say, this, you know, you can't, this is our floor, this is our FAR, this is our lot coverage standard. The, you have to have whatever size lot in order to put two units on. We still have that, and that did not change. If, but they did take away our discretion to do anything extra. Like, we can't, unless it's an historic property, we can't do design review on a second unit.
Which means that a second unit could be built on the street frontage and never, and only be a ministerial review.
Well, it has, it has to have the same amount of setbacks, doesn't it?
It would have to comply with our current.
Our current setbacks apply equally to them, right?
It could be positioned at the rear and side yard of up to five feet. They, they did state that there is a five-foot setback requirement.
I thought that was only for converted garages or something.
That's only for converted garages. Otherwise, your standard setbacks do require, do apply, and that means you could say, no, not in the front yard.
Unless the house, I mean, if a house were set way back, there are some of those, you know, they're set way back on the lot?
Yeah.
And, and there was room in front, including the setbacks, they could put one in front.
Arguably, yes, yes. And there's no design review. And if we don't limit the ability for the height, then arguably they could also configure it. I mean, it would be awfully small, 1,200 square feet.
Yeah, 600, 600, yeah.
Yeah.
But you couldn't.
The 1,200 also is an increase from what, I mean, is that, that's part of the SB 1069?
It is, and there's no way around that. That is an increase from what Sierra Madre permitted as a maximum size.
But what I'm saying is, our workaround on this, because of the issue with the CUPS in the second story, is to not allow a second story.
That's right.
And so, and so.
Or you could be, choose to be the test case.
And so we are, we are necessarily gonna, then, in order to accommodate a law whose goal is to provide more second units, we're going to make the places you could build a second unit in Sierra Madre fewer. That, it just seems.
Why, why do you, why are you saying?
Because, I mean, a lot of second units are over garages.
Yeah, but a lot of them can be detached, they can be attached.
But now you can't, you can't.
No, but you could convert the, you could convert the garage and park the cars in the driveway. That's in here.
Yeah, but you couldn't, you couldn't build it over the garage. You couldn't have it attached and be on the second floor.
We have to be very clear. You're saying that probably limiting the amount of two-story accessory dwelling units.
Or, or attached.
New, new two-story.
Yeah, but like, but we're not saying you can't have an accessory dwelling unit.
Only, only conversion of garage. If you, if you had a two-story house, and you took the second floor, like, let's say you just got rid of the stairs, right? And, and you said, I want to make the second floor a second unit. You can't do that under our, under the height rules.
Yeah, but you could plop it down on the backyard if you've got a spot, or you can take down the garage, you can convert the garage.
But fair, but here's the point. The places you can put a second unit in Sierra Madre, if we approve this, are going to be fewer than they are today.
These, these are the unintended consequences of state statute, which has stripped you of the ability for any discretionary input unless the property is historic. If it's historic, you can do design review, and then arguably, well, a lot of discretion comes in. So arguably, you might be able to require a CUP for an historic, but.
Currently, currently, every accessory building you might build on a lot, the maximum is 15 feet. Is that correct?
Height.
Height, in height.
Oh, it's currently 12 feet, but you can't exceed that with a conditional use permit.
Right, but, but there are no accessory, you can't build an accessory building more than 15 feet of other sorts of accessory buildings.
Correct.
So it would be the same, it would be applied to the same as this, which is considered an accessory building, all intents and purposes.
If it's detached.
If it's detached, yeah.
So your concern would only be relevant to attached, existing attached?
No, well, attached, or, I mean, right now, under our current code, you can build a second unit on top of garage.
Well, do you think that's a good idea?
With the CUP.
And do you think the people of Sierra Madre want people to build second units?
Look, you guys are way ahead of me. I'm pointing out a simple fact that there's a state law that's supposed to make it easier to build second units, and in turn, we're making it harder.
Okay, well, unless, unless we have any.
I take your point. I, one of my questions is, how many pieces of property could this possibly? I, I take your point. I, one of my questions is, how many pieces of property could this possibly affect in the city of Sierra Madre? I mean.
If I may, perhaps, and the way I would maybe suggest you consider is that, are you comfortable allowing, say that there is a space above a garage currently that is an office, doesn't have a kitchen, it's not a unit. Are you comfortable with now that being converted to a living space where that structure is only five feet away from a neighboring property? And I think that there may be a concern with privacy now that somebody actually lives there, has the lights on, may have a television. It's no longer a room that somebody just uses it as an office, maybe sometimes, or maybe not. And what this does, it, now that you no longer have the ability to have a CUP, to maybe condition that and regulate something like that, this now allows you to not allow it by using a height restriction. But I think ultimately.
It, it doesn't allow it if it's new, but if, in your example, it's a, an existing building.
Converted. I'm talking about conversions. Correct.
If it's, if it's an existing building that you're converting, the height requirement is not applicable because it's already there. And if it's 17 or 18.
Well, it, it is applicable because you couldn't convert it because it's over the maximum. Allowed.
It's a two-story garage.
This is my question that, and someday we'll actually get around changing it, but can't hear me. One of the things that's problematic, do we measure the 15 feet? Is it per how we measure roof height? How do you measure the 15 feet?
Yeah, it says per underlying zone.
So it's to the third, third of the roof, right?
So.
So conceivably, and now you're allowed 1,200 square foot, an ADU that's up to 1,200 square feet. So an example would be, yeah, okay, you put it on top of a garage, but you also expand out, let's say. At some point, it's conceivable that in that second unit, you can achieve a height that's greater because you're only measuring 15 feet to a third of the roof, then the rest of it could be much higher.
This is why we have architects on this board.
Right, well, that's always.
Unless we're measuring to the highest point of that accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah.
We're not, right? So 15 feet, that's, I mean, that's fine. But there, there would be a workaround where you could get a second, second accessory dwelling unit.
What you're saying is 15 feet could accommodate two stories.
Like a loft kind of thing.
Well, it could accommodate two stories because of the way we measure height.
If it were like a long wide building.
In, in R1.
In R1, the way we measured it is 15 feet to a third of the roof. But there's still two thirds of the roof that have no height limit essentially.
So you could squeeze a loft or a little something in there.
And by increasing the, the square footage, it actually makes the area potentially bigger, so.
Right, right.
But then the square footage would be counted.
I'm just saying.
But, but if you wanted to, if you wanted to tuck in a second floor, then the, the, the square footage of the unit would be, you'd count the second floor, so it wouldn't be able to be as wide and, you know what I mean?
But a garage, a garage is about 400 square feet, but this unit can be a maximum of 1,200.
Well, you could add on, yeah.
Yeah.
But my point is, there's, there's a workaround potentially where, when it was 800 square feet, like, it becomes harder because you're, you've got less area to kind of maneuver. But now we've basically, effectively, a third increase in that amount of area, so.
It could be possible.
Is, is, yeah.
But the 1,200 still comes out of your total.
Yeah.
The what?
The 1,200 comes out of your total.
Can we like wait on this big discussion and finish having the presentation from staff and then move on to the discussion?
We really did have the conclusion of the presentation. I was just gonna move on to discussion of the.
Sort of just go through the.
So let's go through exhibit B, that is on the diet.
Let's, let's. Let's do that and then we'll have the extended discussion after, so we could come back, we'll come back around to it shortly.
So as you can see in red, and there are a couple of yellow highlights in the document, we'll go through these items. So under the sections of section 17.22, you notice that there is a new section 17.22-095 Rental Restrictions. That is a new item included in this code. And there's also section 1722.130 Recordation. I know Commissioner Hutt.
Can I, just for the record, I think it is important for the record to point out that the, the rental restriction is really just a clarification of what's really already in our code. Because if you are attempting to rent your second unit as a short-term rental, that's like a commercial use of property, which is not permitted in, in particular, in the R1. And that, that has, we've noticed that that's an issue. So I just want to put that for the record. This isn't really new. This is a clarification of how we already interpreted it. But apparently, that was missed by people who thought that they could use their second unit as a short-term rental. And so we, I just want to put that out there.
Effectively, in, in our code, it's a hotel, right?
Yes, yes.
1722-130 Still Under Sections Recordation. I know Commissioner Hutt had a question regarding that. We'll get to that when we get to that section. So under section 1722.005 Findings and Determination. This is just inclusion to show that Senate Bill 1069 was signed into law on September 27th, 2016 and when it becomes effective on January 1st, 2017, and the various government code sections that it impacts. And stating that it introduces new development standards, including allowable floor area, garage conversion requirements, setback provisions, rental restrictions, fire sprinkler requirements, and utility connections. Any concern about the language as drafted? Section 1722.020 Modification to Definitions, just adding for clarity and a couple of points to our definition section. So for the purpose of this chapter, a second unit, also known as an accessory dwelling unit, just to be, maintain consistency with 1069, so they can be used interchangeably. That was the only change to that first definition for second unit. On the next page, page four, this is a new or an introduced definition for clarity. Short-term rental refers to a rental whereby a residence or a portion of a residence is rented to a tenant for a period of 30 days or less and is a prohibited use in the city of Sierra Madre. Any concern with that language?
I'm just wondering. What about February? What about 31-day, 31-day months, 30-day months? 30 days is a little, I, I'm not sure.
I would say a period of less than 30 days.
Okay. I'm just, I mean, it's just a funny thing, but, you know, months are different lengths and you don't want.
I mean, this isn't really an issue, right? We're being hyper technical.
No, no, I'm just.
It's become an issue.
Okay, so should we say less than a month? Because, I mean, if we say less than 30 days, somebody could rent it for February and violate the rule.
The, I, I think that the standard is 30 days. Much longer than that, you have issues of, in other words, to get somebody out, you've got to go to get in a lawful detainer. So 30 days is a standard that the law recognizes.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just.
1722.030 Permitted Areas. There's a new Roman numeral five that is added to this clause stating no garage, which satisfies the parking requirements of the primary unit, shall be converted to a second unit without providing alternative required parking on site.
So that's the tandem parking?
There's more language specific to tandem, tandem parking, parking later on in the ordinance, but it is more or less referencing that.
So basically.
Go ahead. But it only applies to the 80 units, right?
Yes.
It doesn't, that's the only time that that exception will be granted?
That's correct.
But they could convert a garage and replace it with non-covered parking?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
So, so to enforce that, code enforcement will need to know where those units are?
As they come up, as they're developed and so forth, yes.
But e- even the conversion is gonna require a permit.
Yeah.
The conversion will require a permit, will it require a business license?
It would require a business license.
If you're renting it out.
Renting, yes, a rental.
But if it's, if your mother-in-law's back there, you would not.
Extended assembly, right?
Okay.
1722.050 Allowable Floor Area. Again, this speaks to the change regarding the increase to 8, 1,200 square feet from 800 square feet. So under allowable floor area, item A, which I'm still questioning whether or not this should just be a statement and the rest, the remaining should be A and B, or use it as A, B, and C. So the new language would read, the, well, we're restricting or striking all second units, whether attached or detached, shall have a maximum floor area of 800 square feet. The remaining sentence reads, the total floor area of all buildings on the lot, including the second unit, shall not exceed the maximum floor area, otherwise allowed in accordance with this title. And we go to item B, an attached second unit shall not exceed 50% of the existing living area, including the basement and attic of the single-family dwelling, or 1,200 square feet, whichever is less. And C, the maximum floor area for a detached second unit may not exceed 1,200 square feet.
But my question about this is, whatever, these, the maximum 1,200 or 50% still has to fit within the underlying zoning allowable floor area.
That's the point of A.
Yeah, that's why we need A in there.
Right.
Because if it's not there.
So you may not get 1,200.
And that's why, I think, right, we need them to be separate so it's clear that A applies to all of them.
Right, that all of them have, that applies to all.
Ironically, I know, I have a neighbor who had to reduce the size for that dwelling unit from a large, she had to put in a wall to make it 800 square feet in order to have the second dwelling unit pass muster. You know, if we pass this, she'll be able to take out the wall. Not going to.
Yep.
But she'll need a permit to do that.
But she will be exceeding the maximum height under the new one.
Oh, well.
Because she, if she takes out the wall at that time, then she will be exceeding the maximum height because it's conversion at that point?
She now, she does now, you know, once this is passed, the height is she, she'll be on the one.
Because hers is on the second story? Oh, yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Speaking of heights, 1722.060 Height. The maximum height of a, we should strike out single-story detached. So it should just read, the maximum height of a second unit shall be, striking out 12, and shall be 15 feet as measured in accordance with the underlying residential zone. The remaining language is also eliminated, which reads, second units that are located above a garage, located on a second story, or are comprised of two stories are permitted in accordance with the height provisions of the underlying residential zone. Construction of a new second-story unit attached or detached to the primary structure requires approval of a conditional use permit in accordance with chapter 17.60, including the burdens of proof set forth in section 1760.040 and .041. So that portion of the existing code would be omitted.
And we're required to omit that because we can't use, we can't have a conditional use permit for this.
Right, it has to be ministerial. Any concerns or questions?
Well, I, you know, I mean, this, this gets back to the whole issue of the CUP and whatnot. And, you know, I, I think we'd be better off just saying, just referring to the underlying zone and, and saying, you know, the height of the second, of second unit shall be regulated by the standards of the underlying zone. And, and that way, I mean, and this is a policy issue. We gotta, I don't want to sneak this through. It, it is that I don't think anybody in town is gonna sue the city over trying to force through a second unit, you know, on a second floor that would otherwise require a CUP, but I guess that's possible. But it seems to me.
It's very likely possible. That's my, I think it's very likely possible that someone would try to sneak in a second story.
But I, I think, I think it's just as likely that someone could sue us and say, you're regulating the height.
We're allowed to do that. We are allowed to regulate the height.
I, I understand, but I, I think, all you need to do is take a, take this red line and say, your response to SB 1069 was to make it harder to build a second, to build a second unit and I should be able to do this.
Only to build a, only to build a two-story configuration second unit. There's no right to any particular configuration under, under the statute. And there's no right, the statute is not, is not written in a way that recreates a right to put a, either a garage conversion or a unit over a garage. That's really up to the jurisdiction as to whether you want to permit a garage conversion. One of the issues for a garage conversion is, what if the garage that's being asked to be converted to a second unit was the only required covered parking that was built along with the primary unit? And the primary unit would and still does, at the time that it was built, it required covered parking. So that's why a garage was constructed. And now you're gonna take that away by allowing somebody to turn it into a, you know, an accessory dwelling unit. What about the parking? Are we going to make them build more covered parking for the primary unit even though they don't have to have it for the accessory dwelling unit? These are some of the conundrums to have to deal with. But, and that's why, that, that example is why the state statute didn't actually give anybody a right to a garage conversion or an over-the-garage second unit. Just the right to a ministerial review of a second unit that fits within your underlying zoning in terms of size. And if they can, if the lot is big enough, they can get, go up to 1,200 square feet. But we have, we maintain the ability to say how high that can be and where on the lot it can be located. And the only, they didn't take away our right to regular setbacks, except if it's a garage conversion or a unit built over the top of a garage.
Which can be as close as five feet.
Yes.
But we don't have to allow those.
You do not have to allow that because you've got the ability to keep the, the height restriction. As a policy matter, you can choose to allow it, but the problem we're going to have is if we say, if we leave the ordinance the way it is regarding, hey, you can, you can seek a second-story configuration or over a garage with a conditional use permit. I think that we're potentially setting ourselves up for someone that says, no, I don't have to get a CUP for that. You, you just have to let me do it. And now you've allowed someone to build a second story somewhere where, without any public review, public input.
Don't we have the same issue in the hillside zone?
We will.
If somebody wants to build, I mean, under our code, it says you need a hillside development permit or an administrative hillside, both of which are discretionary. It's just a different reviewing body. And now they get to build that ministerially.
I think we're gonna have that same, that same issue there.
And we have the same issue with size, right? Somebody could build a one-story house that's 3,500 square feet, no CUP, and then come back in and build 1,200 square foot second unit with no CUP.
But only if it fits in the, only if it fits within the allowable floor area and setbacks.
Right, but both, but that would have required, under our code, that would have required a CUP with the additional burdens even.
Or arguably, somebody could later say, I come in, they have a very large house or a, a house, and say, I'm gonna add on to my house, but it's for a second unit. So I don't need a conditional use permit for exceeding my, the size of my house relative to my lot size.
And then, and then in the future, just say, well, I decided not to make it a second unit and just say it gets enveloped in the house.
That's right. Yes. So the statute is not, is clearly not perfect. We're left to imagine, you know, the potential abuses. And, but it is absolutely a policy call if, if, if the planning commission believes that it's, it's better planning policy to permit someone the, the opportunity, if that's the only place they can put it on their lot to build over a garage, then we, you know, we, perhaps, we will, you know, we'll take the risk. We'll say, no, but you have to have a CUP for that because everybody else needs one if you're gonna put a second unit. And we'll see if someone wants to.
I mean, to me, this is, this is. I mean, to me, this is, this is, is more than an issue of the second unit. It's an issue of our ability to enforce our, the underlying code. And, and there's a lot of places where we have discretionary reviews, and so we've, we've sort of done a, belts and suspenders fixed for one of them, but we have these other ones, and to me, it, it's much worth if somebody builds, builds on a lot or builds in the hillside. I mean, you could do a lot of damage in the hillside by putting one of these things in the wrong place.
Well, and, you know, to be honest, quite honest, twelve hundred square feet may seem small compared to the primary unit, but as one who lives in a main residence that's twelve hundred square feet, it's thirty by forty. It's not a small building on a residential lot.
Also, keep in mind that twelve hundred feet doesn't include the parking, because we're letting them park, just park in the set.
Well, that's, that's a different issue, but just the structure itself, I mean, I know it's an ADU, but that's not a small insignificant structure, you know?
That's big, that's what I would like to know whether, are we stuck with twelve hundred square feet?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we're stuck with.
That's huge.
You are stuck with.
But my point being is, if we, you know, I think the restriction, the only mechanism we have sort of is, is through this height mechanism to kind of say, "You can have twelve hundred square feet by right, but it's gonna be a single-story structure, you know, centrally."
It has to fit on the lot that you have.
It has to fit on the lot, and it's not gonna be, more than likely, very difficult to do a stacked.
And I think that because it would take more area on the, on the ground floor, it makes it harder to fit it in.
To fit it in.
It makes it harder to fit it in with the setbacks and the coverage and all that stuff.
But, you know, I've been in a number of the second units in a lot of the city, and we have quite a number that are above a garage already. And they are now, because of this, they're.
Legal non-conforming.
Legal non-conforming, so they can continue.
Yes.
Okay.
But they couldn't.
But they couldn't.
Make a beggar.
They can't expand. They wouldn't be able to take advantage of, oh, now I'm gonna build out to twelve hundred square feet.
So, and, and I would say that's, in my experience, that's maybe twenty-five percent of the ones that I've been in, and the rest are small buildings that are in the back corner of a lot. I don't know how many of them are, are twelve hundred. I don't think I have, I can't remember very many, but many of them are a lot smaller. But they're the grandmother cottages and things like that, and we have, we have quite a number in town, yeah.
Is the setback requirement only pertaining to if you do a garage conversion or stack on top of a garage?
Yes.
So, other than that, if it's like, let's say, there's no garage anything, you're gonna go in and put an ADU in, that, per our current code, the closest you could put it to a rear side would be five feet and fifteen?
Five on the side and fifteen on the back.
Fifteen on the rear.
An R one.
Five on the side if the lot is up to sixty feet wide.
Yeah, ten percent.
If the lot is wider than sixty, then it's thirty percent of the lot width, split between the two sides. And either side would get ten percent minimum of the lot width.
It's, it's a little less than RC, right?
Canyon is the same, same setback, yeah, it's less for parking.
It's less for parking, but it's, and it's, or in hillside.
In worst-case scenario, Richard, the smaller lots, you know, the sixty by one twenty-five or one fifty or whatever,
the closest you would be is five or six feet, and then the rear would be fifteen?
The rear would still be fifteen, yes.
And there's also a, a separation between the, the two habitable structures, that's a, a minimum distance between them, correct?
Not in zoning, zoning doesn't have a minimum distance.
But there's a fire code thing about that, right?
But that's just five feet, isn't it?
Yeah. I think it's five or six feet, I think, is separation.
So, there's also that, if it's separated, so there's also that requirement that it's not a zoning thing.
If there's a firewall in between, there's like a block wall in between.
Where I'm trying to go with it is, so, you imagine, this goes back to the height. Fifteen feet, I mean, it's a reasonable vertical height, you know, I mean, for, especially for a single level structure. Fifteen feet could be as close as five feet to a neighbor on the side, and fifteen away from the rear, and it could take twelve hundred square feet, so footprint, I mean, that's not quite a warehouse, but I mean, it's starting to be like, you know?
It's a full-size little house.
Like, a good size, so, to me, that fifteen feet, and then the worst case would be, okay, garage conversion, let's say you were gonna take the garage and convert it, and it's, you know, get your twelve hundred square feet. You could be as close as five and five, right?
Or zero.
Or zero.
Or zero.
Yeah, we have some.
If it's an existing garage sometimes.
And you could, in that, that scenario, it could be fifteen feet as well.
Yes.
Right, so suddenly there, in that case, if it's zero, which, um, has its own issues, but you could have a fifteen-foot-high structure right on the PL.
So, we have.
But you can't build, you can't build that.
But you could convert what's there.
Existing.
So, we have the ability to say, "No, you can't convert existing garages," is that right? Or we have to, we have to permit.
Provide the parking.
Yeah, I think if they can provide the parking somewhere else on-site, then, um, you would.
But can we require that the parking be covered parking, or, or does the law just require us to have?
Not for the DL.
No, but I mean, for the main building.
I, I think that, um, if, if the main unit required covered parking on-site, and someone wants to convert that garage, you can say no, because it would be a code violation, a zoning violation, because the original, the primary structure required covered parking, and you're taking it away.
And the required for the primary structure is, does not, we don't allow tandem in that scenario.
Currently, we do not.
Okay, so they would have to comply with the traditional garage setup covered. If, to make up for the garage you're gonna convert.
Uh, correct, correct, I mean, if they're gonna convert a garage, they've got to build some other covered parking somewhere on-site.
Unless they've got like a four-car garage and wanna convert half, convert half of the four-car garage to a unit or something.
Right, there are probably clever ways to do it.
I mean, I've seen some places in town that have four- and five-car garages in the back, you know? All right, let's, let's finish, let's, let's continue going through the, we'll come back, we'll have plenty to discuss.
I think there's some issues with the height.
Looking at, um, parking again, seventeen twenty-two point zero seven zero. "In order to accommodate required parking on-site, parking for a second unit may be allowed in setback areas in locations determined by the city and through tandem parking." Section seventeen twenty-two point zero eight five, all other standards. Commissioner Hut had a comment here as well. What we've decided was, uh, item A was eliminated, "Where privacy view and environment, environment considerations are not compromised, reduce setbacks no closer than five feet from the side, and rear property lines may be granted through a minor conditional use permit process." That's statement, entire statement is eliminated. A new, um, section A and B is just simply renumbered, and the remaining language remains the same regarding, and that's all regarding a reverse corner lot. On page six, seventeen point twenty-two point zero nine five, rental restrictions, just clarification, "No second unit shall be used as a short-term rental." And Commissioner Hut did have a question regarding seventeen point twenty-two point one thirty, recordation, which is on page seven. And, um, I believe your comment was, you thought we should eliminate that section.
Well, the reason we put this in originally was because we only allowed second units to be rented to low income. And so, part of the thing was, we, we had a provision to, to, uh, to monitoring of the low-income housing. And so, people would, you know, put that, and, and then we've taken that out, because we've modified this a few times, but we never changed the recordation, and I don't know why we still have this, because we don't, we don't typically require covenants for just a house. So, I mean, is there anything that we have in here that we feel like, for some reason, extra special, we have to monitor it that we don't for other things?
If I may explain that, the, the reason that staff is concerned with removing this, and that is because a second unit is a, a different animal than a, a, a single-family residence. And oftentimes, when someone purchases a prop, purchases a property that has a second unit, they are not aware that there are specific requirements, because they haven't seen the ordinance. Most people won't read a municipal code until they need to. I think, recordation of a covenant, what it does is it puts it on the title, and so that, uh, new owners are, um, hopefully, aware that it is a different animal. It has specific requirements, for example, short-term rentals. They might buy a property, and it may be advertised by a realtor as saying, "Income opportunity." And here you think you can just, you know, rent it, rent both main houses and, and the other unit to two different households, which is not allowed under the ordinance. Short-term rental is not allowed under the ordinance, so I think it is very useful in putting people on notice that it is on their title, it gets recorded, and it runs with the land, so that they're aware that this is a, a different type of unit that is subject to separate and different unique restrictions that a single-family home would not otherwise be. So, that is staff's concern, is that could be missed easily.
I think the issue is that someone could look at it and think, this is, this is like an R three, you know, that it's two separate things on a unit and, to, an R two or some, you know, that, that, that it, it, it is, it's a different animal than this kind of auxiliary restructure, and I think it's important to leave it on, because it is different.
Does it assist the city at all in its arena, meeting its arena numbers?
It still will, yes.
A, a second unit does, yes, and we keep track, you know?
And, and does the, does the covenant help you keep track?
Um, not necessarily.
Because I remember every time the, the arena numbers have to be met, everybody's out, you know, looking in all the backyards for the second units and trying to figure out, can we make it, you know?
Right, I mean, the recordation is just a requirement that is part of making that a viable and legal unit. But as far as keeping track of the numbers, it, it, it doesn't, because we don't have access to title information, but we have, we have our own records for legal second units that we can access.
And once it's legalized or permitted by right, you, you know that it exists, basically, like.
Correct, that is correct.
Okay.
I think the problem was the, all the non-legalized, how would you know?
To bring them in, and, yeah, right.
Right, right.
To make the numbers.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with that, then.
Okay. So, that, those are all the changes and edits that were made to, um, chapter seventeen point two-two. Any additional changes, any last comments?
I, I just, I'm just wondering, I, this may be putting you on the spot, but, but can we have some idea if, you know, on a sort of a typical-sized lot, say it's an R one seventy-five hundred lot, what the amount of, of floorier that's allowed now is? I'm just, you know, I think that the, the, you know, what, where, how much room is there on your, on, you know, there are a lot of lots like that in town.
Right, you can do twenty-six, twenty-five, and if you have a four-hundred-square-foot garage, it's twenty-two hundred square feet.
So, so twenty-two hundred square feet is the maximum you could have.
Of the house.
Of the house.
Right.
And that would include the house and this additional structure, if, if.
Unless, unless somehow they could figure out a weasel way to convert the garage, and then not have any covered part.
And not have another garage, yeah.
Oh, no, put another garage, right?
No, because that's square footage.
But that's part of the square footage.
So, if you have, if, if.
So, that's not counting the garage, did you say?
Yeah, twenty-two hundred is not counting the garage.
Let's say it's twenty-six hundred.
Twenty-six, twenty-five.
Twenty-six, twenty-five, okay. So, that's the maximum you could have on that seventy-five hundred square-foot lot. No matter whether it's one, uh, one building or this and an additional, so. I mean, that's, I think that's an important thing to think about, because I think that's the most common-sized lot in town, maybe.
And, and, and how many rooms can be within that, this unit, this twelve-hundred-square-foot unit?
It doesn't say maximum, but it says minimum, you have to have a bedroom, bathroom, and a kitchen.
No restrictions on that.
On number of bedrooms, no.
But don't you, you have to have a bedroom, bathroom, and a kitchen.
Not more than, not more than one, it says. Not more than one.
Not more than one bedroom.
In our code, it does.
Oh, I don't remember that.
I thought it said.
It says on the top there, um.
I mean, can these thing, can you see these things becoming more than?
It's, I believe it's restricted to one, one unit.
And do we have that in?
It's under definition, right?
Do we have that in here?
It provides complete independent living for no more than two persons.
Right.
It even limits the number of people.
Yeah. Two, two people, one bedroom, one kitchen.
And no more than one bedroom.
And no more than one bedroom.
One square feet, that's huge.
Yeah.
That's nice.
In New York City, that's like a.
Oh, my goodness, yeah, not more than one bedroom.
I wish there was some way we could, uh, have some input on the size, maximum size. I mean, that's twelve hundred, we're, we're allowing.
It's larger than my first house.
Another house in the backyard.
Well, if there's, if there's room. I mean, it, it's only gonna happen if the first house is twelve hundred square feet.
And those, that, that does exist.
That does exist, but, you know, if, if the first house is fourteen hundred square feet, then you're only, you're left with less.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think part of the issue is, is, you know, how, and there's also the setback requirements, so that you can, you can get to this maximum, but only if, if you can fit in the setback requirements, so that on most of these lots, you're not gonna be able to fit in twelve hundred square feet. And if you have a bigger lot, then there's gonna be more room to fit this in. So, it, it, it's, it's not as if, given the other aspects of placing things on a lot, this is, it's a given that you could put that much on.
The hard part about that, which I agree with, is there's so many permutations and combinations of what's on the property versus where it is, like.
Right.
I mean, if you gave me a rectangle lot, I, I bet I could, you know, given where the properties were, you could probably figure out a place to put it. It may not be twelve hundred square feet, it may be less, but, like.
I'm not saying you're not, I'm not, I'm not saying you're not gonna be allowed to put it, but I'm saying probably in ma, most situations, you're not gonna be able to fit twelve hundred square feet in there.
No.
It's gonna, you're gonna be able to fit something smaller because of the other, because of what's already there, and because of the setbacks.
But if it's something, let's say it's eleven hundred square feet, that's big, those are big rooms, and that's easy to split those rooms into numerous rooms, and end up with more people in there than are supposed to be in there, which causes a parking problem, you know?
Which is why, yeah, which is another reason why we want this, this, it to be recorded, because, then we know.
So, my biggest sort of issue or hang-up is, is on this height, because I'm trying to understand, if we're, if philosophically, we wanna use that as our mechanism to negate the building of two-story second units, you know, or possibly some sort of unit that's over a garage, existing garage, then I think this, I think the fifteen actually works against us. I think it's possible, at that size, and again, I'm using a worst-case scenario, I mean, more likely it's gonna be smaller than twelve hundred, but let's say you could, on a given lot, you could get a pretty large structure at pretty much the corner of a, a property, you know, or as close as five and five, that would be fifteen feet tall, you know, and still be, you know, uh, one story. And I, I would argue you could even get potentially some sort of second story in that structure. But if, and if we're okay with that, then, then the fifteen is fine, you know, because it ki, kinda matches accessory structure height in R one, but if we're really trying to ratchet that down, the possibility of two-story second units, then I, I would like to see that number reduced as well, because at fifteen, it's possible, the way we measure height, to get a two-story accessory dwelling unit.
And if we kept it at twelve feet?
Well, so that's, that's where we start to start doing the math, and that, that was, my first thought was just to leave it at twelve, because I think the thinking was, the way we measure height, you would be hard, hard-pressed to get a second story in there, because you'd have to meet, you couldn't be higher than twelve feet at a third of the roof, so by the time you went up, it's just, it gets harder. It just gets more difficult, yeah, it gets narrower, so I don't know, that's just something.
But, but, but we can't do that, can we?
Sure.
I mean, we, no, but we, our regulation of accessory, uh, structures is fifteen feet, and we can't set it lower, can we?
Right now, we say twelve feet, right?
No, no, we say twelve feet for sec, for second units. We say fifteen feet for accessory dwelling units.
But we're changing this for second units.
Right.
Yes.
And we have the purview, this, that number could be five feet if we wanted.
Well, it's gotta be rational, yeah.
Wait, wait, but, no, no, hold on, I, I was under the impression that we couldn't set this lower than what we set for other accessory structures.
No, it, it doesn't say that, what, um, you originally had twelve feet, and staff looked at that and realized. What, um, you originally had twelve feet, uh, and staff looked at that and realized, well, if we're going to have a height restriction and stick with it and not allow, uh, a second story, because we can't do the CUP, then why not just make it uniform? And that, that helps, uh, justify why we're saying single story. Fifteen is the maximum height for any accessory structure. One thing you could do is just, is say fifteen feet at the highest point of the roof line.
Well, but, okay, I, that would be where I would wanna go, but I think that we, the way we measure height regu- on the underlying zone needs to be changed as well. Like, to me, that is just, it's not archaic, but it's an odd way of, of measuring height, and so-
But do, do we apply that?
So I wanna, before we, before we, yeah. Before we go on with this-
And accessory dwelling units.
Before we go on with this, I'd like to open the public hearing and hear from the public, and then come back and have more, more discussion.
Thank you.
So if there's anyone, uh, if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on this issue, here's your chance, please come to the podium. Limit your statements to no more than four minutes, and please state your name and address for the record.
Rodney Spears, uh, three-five-four North Cannon. I'm, I'm just listening to this fifteen feet, and as a, as a designer, if you're gonna put in a two-story, you're probably gonna have twelve-inch joists for floor joists. You're gonna have an eight-foot ceiling in the garage. You're gonna have another eight foot, you're gonna be up seventeen, eighteen feet, plus your third of the roof, so I'm not sure where the fifteen feet comes from, 'cause I don't think you could do it.
I think you could.
Well, it's, it's based on how we measure. We don't measure fifteen feet to the top, we measure it to a third up the roof pit.
Yeah, that's what you said, but it seems to me we've got, like, sixteen feet or more before you even get the roof. By the time you have a eight-foot ceiling at the garage, at the second floor, and then you put in twelve-inch floor joists, and then you start putting in, uh, your rafters.
Well, the second, the second floor could only be sort of in the center of the building. It couldn't go all the way to the edges.
It wouldn't cover the whole garage.
It, it would just be, you know, af- it would have to be just in the, in the middle of the building, after you're partway up the roof.
But then they put in a couple dormers and look out over the neighbors, and they've, they've increased their headroom without, and, and made them, given themselves more usable floor space.
Or it's a flat roof.
Or it's a flat roof.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, if you're gonna put a flat roof with, most of the houses in town are sloping roofs, and that's gonna look tacked on.
Yeah, but we won't have any say in it.
Tacky has never seemed to be in the, where in the-
It's on for this topic, by the way.
Thank you very much.
So, I, I guess, one question, before we, we try to m- mangle with the, the height measure, it would be useful to know what, what we can, how, how much we can regulate, 'cause if we can't, we shouldn't waste our time thinking about it.
Also, keep in mind, if I may, there's, there's been an instance when somebody came forward to try to convert an existing, what was a large-sized garage, I think it was a four-car garage or three-car garage, and convert some of that to a, a second unit. That building is existing, but the height of that building did not fit the twelve. But the impact of the building being there was already there. But it would have been precluded from conversion because of the twelve, which is an unusual height for a garage or for, I'd say, an accessory structure. So also keep that in mind, if you decide to go with a twelve, you may also be, uh, working against the production of the units. And in this case, the impact of a building was already there, um, because it's an existing building. So that's something perhaps to consider as well, 'cause that could prevent some of these from being converted in the future also, if the height is extremely restrictive beyond your-
I'd like to let the next person go.
Joe Catalano, four-eighty North Lima Street. Um, if, uh, it's kind of an interesting discussion, but I, I think you should just give it up and, 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 and make, uh, the, the height thing applicable, just like any other second story. If you're trying to hold these things down, um, uh, I, I was just thinking that as an architect, if I was confronted with your regulation, I would simply do a shed roof and, uh, at a steep, at a steep angle, and, uh, a measure fifteen feet up would be just a small part of the, the way up, the, uh, the, the slope of the shed roof, and I can get plenty of headroom in there. And, uh, you'd all hate what I designed, okay? Because it would, uh, you know, it could be a big looming thing and still be within, uh, the guidelines that you're talking about. So maybe, maybe you should consider, um, just, uh, dropping the ex- the fifteen-foot accessory thing. I, I'm just throwing that out there and just say, it has to, it has to comply as for any other second-story piece, and, you know, and of course, your, your, your setbacks and so forth would all apply. The other thing, real quickly, is, um, an awful lot of garages around don't, the, the existing garage does not have to meet the same structural requirements as for a, I'm going to building code now down the line beyond you guys, you know, when, when somebody comes in with their working drawings for a building permit. Uh, the, the garage structure itself does not, uh, meet the, um, the structural requirements for a res- a residence, uh, and occupied space. So there's gonna have to be some loop-back me- mechanism in there. We don't wanna have something, uh, 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 maybe like the Darling House, where they, uh, where they say, "Oh, oh, but you said I could convert this, this garage," you know? And, and there is, so there's, there's actually a, they, they run into a brick wall. They, they followed what you did, they ran into a brick wall, the building, uh, building department, the building permit phase, and, uh, and, and there's a big, there's a big issue. I don't know how you deal with that one. But, uh, the truth of the matter is that, that an awful lot of garages around just don't have the footings or meet the other structural requirements for a, uh, a residential to begin with.
But I mean, it is, we are, it's required that it will, if it's gonna be converted to residence.
Okay. But would the walls be reconstructed, basically, a garage wall? That'd be reconstructed for, uh, insulation, and as you know, Title twenty-four.
Fire separation, two-hour fire-rated walls.
Well, a garage wall doesn't have to have building paper behind the wood siding, so it's gonna, an insulated, uh, a wall would have to have building paper, so they gotta take the siding off, put that on first, and put in insulation, then a vapor barrier. All these items that aren't on, on a garage wall.
Finding out what the footings are underneath that, you know, there's a lot of garages that have been built with just, uh, a, a haunched slab, right?
Yeah, right on a slab.
That's gonna be the most-
No vapor barrier underneath it, the floor slopes.
The most, the most problematic part, but, um, I could, I could follow what you're, you're all talking about here and just do a shed roof, and, uh, like I said, you're gonna hate it, 'cause it'll, it'll comply, but it'll be sticking way up in the air. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caroline Brown, Altus to Drive. Yes, from the standpoint of not having any review over what is built, when, in the past, you, when you did, you were very careful about the way in which houses that were non-conforming on one wall were impacted about expanding the non-conforming on the other side of the lot line. Neighbors will not be able to come forward anymore and say anything about anything on the second unit, because that is completely off the table, as is your review off the table. So the discussion, as was just pointed out to you, how not to allow something as, as hideous as a, um, shed roof that would impact the neighboring property has to be figured out here somewhere in your discussion right now about what is allowed, so that that can't happen. You can work on that, which is what you're doing. Because on, in the past, there was a, a big important part, especially in the canyon. Of course, our lots are way precluding, too small to, to preclude any of this. But when people wanted to expand a house, and the neighbors were concerned because of the window configuration, how it was gonna match up into their windows. And it could happen here, unless you can figure out how not to, to let that happen, 'cause you'll have no review, and the neighbors will have no review. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Barbara Lee. I got here so late, I didn't hear most, most of this. But could I have the, um, California Fire Code for clearance cited? Does this fit into what's being discussed for the, the new SB one zero six nine? Does the California Fire Code come into play to honor that? Because I'm hearing the setbacks, five feet versus fifteen feet. Just a question to make sure that the safety is there, and I know, I know Bob, you'll jump in on that one. I know the downtown area is two-thirty thirteen, so I like the twelve-foot story that's being discussed here with the city planners. Really rusty, but I always thought that in the ordinance, it says that covered parking isn't a requirement in Sierra Madre. So that's buried someplace deep, it's seldom ever used, but, um, I also didn't hear what was said about the tandem parking. Was that a street measurement or a lane measurement versus what's required for tandem versus not? And I think that's about it, because I walked in so late, I didn't hear, uh, really. Also, I think someone was discussing height measurement, and it goes back to the old measure from the curb or measure from, um, natural slope to reduce the height, so, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this? Well, thank you all very much, and I'll close the public hearing for now. Now we can discuss to our hearts' content. I just have a question, does, R-one zone has, is there angle plane in that zone requirement? And that would apply to this, correct?
That would also apply.
That would apply, so that even F-
But it would never, I mean, it, the chances of it clipping that are, because it's taken from the-
Property line.
Property line.
Mm-hmm.
It won't.
And you have to go up at least ten, is it ten feet?
Ten feet, and then go forty-five.
And then you go forty-five, so it might clip the fifteen.
It might clip the fifteen, that was the thinking, it might, if the fifteen were, if it were a house like this and the flat were facing the next-door neighbor, it could clip off the, the top corner of the fifteen.
Yeah, a foot or so. Huh?
Wouldn't apply to conversion, yeah, but it would apply to a new, it could, it could have some impact on a new, on a new structure in terms of limiting the bulk, the, close to the neighbor's bulk of a second story. That would be the same as in the existing zoning.
Question I have, Letitia, you were saying about the garage, you're, the example you were citing, the four-car garage or whatever, that couldn't be converted part of it. Is there a scenario where you could achieve this fifteen-foot height for a second unit as close to the rear and side as five and five?
If it's an existing, I mean, you could have a garage-
Like a garage.
A second story, well, a, a, just a garage, a one-story garage you're referring to?
Well, let's say, there would have to be a garage that would be in that spot, and then you went in and converted that. Let's assume for a second you can replace the parking, you know? And so you've got this box that's at five and five. You could conceivably erect on top of it, or however, to get to fifteen feet, and then do what you want and be as close as five and five, or?
No, you, well, you would not be able to do that if you, if your setback requirements, if the garage is five and five today, um, your setback requirements would apply to that new, to that addition on top of the garage, you're, you're-
I think in here it says if it's an addition on top, you, you can only, five and five is allowed, right? You can't have a step, you can't have a different setback for, for the additional dwelling unit.
Even if that's the underlying code?
If it's on a garage, existing garage.
That, that's what the new law says. You still have to provide the five and the five.
Five and five, yeah.
Okay, so your question is again-
My question is, it, it is conceivable that we could have a scenario where there's an existing garage that's-
Four-hundred square feet.
Whatever, yeah, four-hundred square feet, that's five and five. Then we can go in and erect a second unit on top of that, that would achieve a fifteen-foot side wall on both rear and side, and go about our business without any review of it.
You could.
And comply.
Especially if it's a larger garage, say it's a three-car garage, you know, it's a good six-hundred or maybe sometimes even bigger than that.
Sure.
Yeah, you could, and, yeah.
And if the garage was closer, let's say it's non-conforming, existing, it's zero and zero or something, could you go in and put a second unit on that?
Not on top, but inside you could. You can convert a garage with, and there are no setback requirements. So if the garage is already at the property line and you're converting it, that's permissible, in other words, you're not violating setback, because state law has taken away the ability for you to say, "Ah, you can't put a residence there because you're, there, because you'd be violating setback." What state law's saying is, hey, if you're converting a garage, you can't even require setback. But if you're putting, um, a unit on top of an existing garage, you can require five-foot setback.
Okay, but could my converted garage, second dwelling unit, have fifteen-foot sidewalls if it's at a, if it's ex- I'm not adding a si- I'm not adding on top, I'm just gonna convert that existing garage.
Up to one-third of the-
I need more room for my gra- single-level second unit. Um, but I, I, you know, 'cause I'm, I'm gonna use it as a, whatever, studio or something. I can have fifteen-foot sidewalls. I'm not adding a second unit.
Yeah. That doesn't sound as much like a conversion as reconstruction of what was there, if you're, um-
So it has to stay in the envelope of the garage.
It, we, that's, that's a good question, that's an implementation question.
I think what you're asking, if I'm understanding correctly, you have an existing garage, and you're converting that to a second unit, but you're also adding square footage on top up to fifteen.
It's gonna be open, there's not gonna be a, a floor in there, so let's say my garage is-
Oh, you're raising the roof line.
Yeah, I'm just raising the roof to fifteen, 'cause I'm allowed to.
And that doesn't, it's, that's, that's an implementation call. I mean, whether we would call that a garage conversion when you're, or whether a garage conversion means you need to stay within the envelope. At any rate, if you're converting a garage to living space, you're still going to have to comply with fire code and all the building codes.
And you're also gonna have to provide a new garage.
Well, let's, I, I'm putting that aside, I'm saying that, that's accomplished. My lot's big enough, but I've got this thing that's at zero and zero, and I wanna convert the garage to my second dwelling unit.
I mean, to me-
And I want it to have, I wanna raise the roof height too, so-
To me, a conversion, to me, to me, a conversion means like you're cha- you're keeping the building and changing the use inside.
That's what it would seem to me, you're not making any modifications, you're converting an existing building and into a new use.
But you think of it in stepwise, you, you convert it and don't make any changes, and you come back, you know, a year later and say, "Okay, now I wanna make these changes."
I wanna put an attic.
Right.
Attic, yeah.
And, and, you, you know, the thing is, if you're zeros, you're not gonna have any windows there, right? 'Cause the fire code's not gonna, yeah.
You're allowed a very small perc- no, you're not, no windows, you're at zero.
If it's zero, so you're gonna have-
At three feet, you're allowed fire-rated windows, only to a certain percentage, and at five feet, you're good.
I think the way we would look at it is-
And you have to have windows if there's a bedroom, right?
If you're not increasing the degree of non-conformance, and your non-conformance at the moment is the setback. If you're not increasing that by adding an attic to it, then I think we would allow it.
See?
'Cause that's what it's all about, if you have something that's existing non-conforming, you can make modifications as long as the degree of non-conformance is not, you're not, uh, increased. And in this case, you wouldn't, you still are within the maximum allowable height.
Yeah, and you're adding an attic.
And you add an attic, so, uh, and if that attic does not, is exempted-
Or if you added-
From floor area, that's, that's a bonus.
Or if you added floor area away from the offending setbacks. I mean, if you're zero, you obviously couldn't go any farther than that, but if you went the other directions, you could, you could add up to twelve-hundred.
So, all this to say, I think that if, if what we're trying, we, we may end up with a scenario where we have al- virtually almost fifteen-foot-high walls that could be at a zero setback. I mean, that's the worst case, I'm not, and I don't know how many there are of those, but, but even lesser degree, at five feet away, we could have something that's that tall.
So the, the, the fifteen feet is, is a third up the roof, right?
Yeah, so the, at the wall, it would be lower, but if you had a low-pitch roof, it could be like fourteen or thirteen or something. So my concern is, I think we need to, the fifteen could work, but I think we need to measure it to the highest point of that structure. And I'm okay with putting aside the fact that it doesn't match R1, which I think it, at some future date, we need to revisit that and look at that as well. But for these things, if we measured fifteen to, so if you had a pitch roof, it's at the, it's at the ridge, from that to natural or finished grade, whichever's lower, or on the perimeter of the building, the perimeter of this accessory structure. So that's, whichever is lower.
Whichever, whichever, the top height is lower.
No, what, like, whatever grade is lower, either the finished or natural.
The lowest grade, yeah, okay.
No, what, like, whatever grade is lower, either the finished or natural, 'cause you could have concrete, hard-scape adjacent to it, or just dirt.
I just.
And we measure it to that height. That's gonna add some, I mean, we gotta add that language in here if we're gonna do that, but, and maybe even a diagram, I don't know, just to show how we measure height.
If they go with a flat roof, they can have a fifteen-foot-high wall?
Well, so.
I was like that, you're better.
Okay, that was my next point, my next point. Typically, when you do that, there's a provision for if the slope is less than, if it's like virtually a flat roof, you get less height, it's not fifteen.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that's just, I mean, there's usually two standards, if it's a pitch roof that's like two and twelve and greater, you can go to fifteen. If it's less than two and twelve pitch, you know, you're gonna be at twelve feet or something, they measure, they have two different standards.
That's not what our code says now.
I, I totally agree, it doesn't say that, our code says measure to a third of the roof.
Fifteen feet. It, it says, if it, it says if it's flat, it's fifteen feet, if it's pitched, it's measured to a third. I just looked.
So, I don't know, that's just something.
But that's just an R one, too. In, in, in hillside, it's, it's a, it goes with the slope, and we don't have a separate thing for attached, so you could do a second story in that one.
And I would argue that this is a, as was put earlier, a completely different beast, because we can't really regulate it in terms of having any say on it, that in the other cases where we do have discretionary review, you know, we would see that, and if it made sense, like, okay, yeah, it's, you know, the height, you know, it, it works, or it doesn't work, but here we, you know, we don't, and we can't, may get something that's an unintended consequence of this, that's.
I mean, I think that the, the sort of the stated purpose of this is to, the stated purpose of this, the state law, was to prevent people from preventing, prevent municipalities from preventing people to put in second units in a way that's stricter than the existing zoning.
Right.
And what it's coming out to be is permitting them to do it in a way that's less strict than the existing zoning. Right?
Yes.
That's, that's, that's what the effect of this is, is the way this is written. And what, what, what I think our concerns is, is that it would be nice to have it equivalent to the existing zoning, right? And it seems like we're not permitted to do that, is that true?
That has not been tested, but I can tell you that the, that the statute has a provision in it that states unequivocally that you cannot apply other provisions of your code to create a discretionary process.
So we're not permitted to make this discretionary, but are we permitted to, to design this in a way that makes it more equivalent to what is the underlying permitted thing within the zone? I guess was what we're trying to talk about here, is there a way we can do that?
Well, the state, the state, the statute does leave you with authority that you already had, which is, you can say, there may be zoning areas in the city where a, a second unit for one reason or another just isn't appropriate in those particular zoning areas, and they're not prohibited there, or that they're prohibited there. The statute also allows you to say how big the lot has to be and what the lot coverage is as to whether a second unit will even fit on the given lot, so.
But that's essentially the underlying.
Right, that's all underlying zoning standards.
But the actual size and shape of the building, it seems like we can't really control it that much, is that true?
You can config, you can say it cannot be configured as a second, I mean, some amount of size and shape, you can say it can't be in a second-story configuration.
We can say that.
You can say that, and, and the easiest way to say that was to put a height restriction. And the only reason we suggested that is because it is not crystal clear whether if someone said, okay, I see that, that, I see the height restriction, but I'd really like to be able to put a second story on, because there's you on my lot, or I'd really like to build over the garage, the garage is way at the back, it won't impact anybody, it's the only place on my lot I could put a second unit, and so I'm willing to get the CUP, I wouldn't, and.
And we can't do that.
Well, that's the way our ordinance reads now, before we make this, and we can, it's kind of a policy call, because we do, I think, also want to avoid unintended consequences. By taking away the option of someone to seek a CUP, and it's on, it's, it's their business if that's what they wanna do, or they could choose to configure their unit in a way that doesn't require a CUP, in other words, I don't want the second, I don't want the second story, I'm not gonna go above my garage.
I thought we're not allowed to have a CUP on this.
Well, that's the problem, is if we, if we leave it the way it is now, we've got the potential of someone saying, well, I want the second unit and I wanna go above my garage, and the fact that you make me get a CUP to do it is unlawful, that's the concern. We're fine with people who say, yeah, I understand, and I understand that there's a height restriction, but I really appreciate the fact that the city gave me an out. If I wanna, you know, come before the planning commission with a CUP, I'm more than willing to do it, because every lot's unique and it makes sense for me, and I'm really glad that there's, that's maybe ninety-nine percent of our population, and then there's the possibility that someone will say, I, I want the second unit, the, the second-story configuration, no matter what, I wanna put it over my garage, no matter what. I don't have to get a CUP to do it, you have to just let me.
Right, and given recent occurrences in the city of Sierra Madre, I think the, 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 the level of,
We're getting close to that stove already.
The level of, of trust among planning, among certain members of the planning commission, starting with me, is quite low. And I think that my, 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 you know, my, my inclination is to make this as strict as we can, but I also feel very strongly about the issue of housing, this major housing shortage in, in California. And I think that we do need to allow second units, because I have a daughter who can't find a place to live, she can't afford it, it's more than half her, her salary, of which it's supposed to be a living wage, she can't find any place to live, because she can't afford it, because there's such a housing shortage, and so I think there is a point to allowing these second units in Sierra Madre, I think it's, it's sort of our social responsibility to, to try to nibble away at this housing shortage. But not in a way that allows people to come and take advantage of the underlying rules that we have about second stories, which was a big, has been a big deal, of, of people, of things, something that people didn't like when we were going through the, you know, changing, doing the general plan, and so it's this, it's this conflict we're facing between need, trust, and consistency with what we have. And I think that, 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 that's, that's how I'm framing it in my mind, and how do we, how do we get to something that fits in with the new law, maintains, you know, things that are important to the citizens, and also allows us to go forward in a way that's reasonable, and not in a way that's gonna allow or encourage sneaky use of a loophole.
Well, that, this was the, the version that staff has presented to you, and it's not the only version that you could consider, it's just, it's just, it was a starting point.
Yes, of course.
Was drafted as the most conservative, least likely to have problems like that happen.
And plus, we don't have much time to do this, it has to, it has to be enacted by the first of the year.
Can I, can I ask a question? We have to, we have to get this done by the end of the year.
Yes.
But can we come back next year and amend it? Or, or is this like our one shot?
No, I think you can amend it, yeah, you can amend it as long as you're consistent with, and you don't exceed the standards such as they are that the state imposes on you. Yeah, I think you can, as long as your amendments aren't inconsistent with the law, you can. But right now, our ordinance is inconsistent with state law in some ways. Some of those are easy fixes, the one we're really grappling with is the second-story issue. Another potential approach, and I'm kind of thinking about this and thinking out loud, is maybe, I mean, if you're concerned about unintended consequences in terms of planning, I mean, for example, maybe there's a lot out there where the absolute best configuration possible is a second unit on top of the garage. It just happens to fit perfectly, and anywhere else on the lot, it's, you either couldn't have it, or it would, it would be a bad choice. Perhaps we put in the ordinance that your ability to have a second, or have a second unit by right or as ministerial is only in a single-story configuration. And if you choose, I mean, if you wish to seek a second-story configuration, that's, you, there is a CUP requirement for it. Otherwise, you, you know, yes.
But isn't that the same thing we have in our current code?
It's kind of what we have now, only I, we would type, we would make that more clear, that this is one hundred percent your choice. It's, it's not that we are violating the law by having a discretionary process.
We are allowing you to have a unit.
Yeah, we're giving you an extra choice that you wouldn't otherwise have, and if you want that, you have to do what everybody else does, who wants a second unit, you gotta apply for the CUP.
Do you think that would work, do you think that would comply?
I, I would try to draft, you know, put some extra words in there for compliance with the law to, I think it, I think it's arguably that it would. But this version was the most.
It was simple.
A simple, rigid, conservative approach, you know, so that we wouldn't have to have that. But that doesn't necessarily mean it's best planning.
So, so the, it's a state, we're, we're doing this in response to a statewide law that essentially takes away our ability to provide certain kind of oversight to this kind of development.
Correct.
And in many communities, the housing stock was created in the same decade, and so many of them, you know, the, the housing looks alike, and it'd be easier to be more consistent. We're living in a community that has, everywhere from soup to nuts in terms of, you know, housing, the size of the lots, things like that. And also, given the fact that we are still, you know, trying to get over the previous two meetings, and what we have seen, and you know, that may be fresh in our minds, and when you, when I think about of all the, all the meetings we've had, and all the applicants we've seen, they were not standard, but they were certainly egregious. My, my concern is that we lose control over those, that one percent or that, those unique ones who wanna take advantage of the, of a statewide mandate. I would, while I, I was, I thought about your proposal for a ridgeline height as, in terms of, you know, a, a state, a, a standard. I like, I, I'm much more preference to the one where the CUP is required, because then we would get a look at it.
Right.
And I think that's the one thing that we're, that I'm personally struggling with, that is that these things will be created, and no one will have anything to say about it. And at least if we can give, we can have a semblance of oversight on this and have some kind of influence on it, and even the process of going through a CUP sometimes is a deterrent for speculative behavior. I think that, that that would be in preference to just saying, okay, fifteen feet, 'cause while I greatly respect the work of architects, I know that they're good ones and bad ones in terms of, you know, what they can try to get away with in terms of what the code will allow. So, yeah, 'cause you could still get a twelve-foot wall. But I would like the idea that, okay, if you wanna go second story, then, then we will have to look at it. If you wanna do a first-story conversion, in, in, in terms of what the community will see, the building will not look any different. It'll be the use of the building that changes. If, if they convert a garage. Whereas if it's a second story, the community will see a different structure, and that will be the issue, you know, when, you know, why wasn't, why, why didn't we not have a, a say in this, or why could the, how could that have been done without some kind of approval? And we, we could only point to Sacramento as our answer, and that may not be.
Could, could we, could we create a definition of conversion that says it will exist within the existing envelope of the building?
You can do that.
Because I think that might be a useful step to take, and that way, if, if it is a, you know, that, that.
If it's a four-hundred-foot building, it's gonna be a four-hundred-foot building.
And it's as high as it is, it's within the envelope of the walls and the roof, and it converts within that.
Bring, bring your attention, like, for conversions, that's, I think, great, yeah, we should state that as a definition.
I'm just talking about that part of the issue.
And I totally agree, like, if we can still have the CUP mechanism in some form, that's better than, you know, restrict, using the height as the only mechanism to prevent or regulate two-story second units, but I, I was working from the assumption that we, we could not have any kind of CUP, so.
We, we are working from that assumption, I'm trying to have our cake and eat it, too.
Okay, well, if we can, I.
Trying to maybe do some drafting into our ordinance to pull some language out of the statute and pay the statute, the state statute proper lip service, and explain more in our, in our second unit ordinance that the, if you configure, the configuration of a second unit that will receive ministerial review is a single-story structure that does not exceed.
Twelve feet.
Right, twelve, twelve feet, whatever the magic number is. Including a, you know, a single-story garage, a conversion, where the conversion stays within the envelope. And if you want something, if you wanna convert, if you want a configuration that is outside of that standard, that height standard, we will consider it, it's your option to request that, and the process for doing so is a conditional use permit before the planning commission, the same as any other structure, any other second-story structure in town.
I mean, we are allowed to say no second stories, are we? Are we allowed to do that?
Yes, we, we already, we can say that now.
We can say no second story.
One way to get around that is, because we do have a definition of a second story in the code, and if you don't follow another definition, but you create an attic, you essentially have a second story, where you're now bypassing the second-story requirement or even the prohibition, and still essentially have two stories, but one has dormers, and it's really an attic, because it doesn't fit the definition of story, so if there's any way, if you're concerned, you might want to take that, you know, consideration when you draft, when you.
Well, I mean, that's, there's that thing, there was that language in here that says including attics and basements in the twelve-hundred square feet.
No, but that's for the, that's for it to come up with your fifty percent.
Fifty percent.
Oh, 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 you're right, that's of the house, yeah, you're, you're right.
Because one thing I have seen, and I will tell you, in the R one zone, where you have, the commission amended the ordinance to require a CUP for second story, I have seen where somebody will come in and design the second story as an attic, so it doesn't fit the definition of second story, and therefore bypassing the need for a conditional use permit, so you might want to be aware of that.
I mean, that's a good, great point, but to be fair, part of the discourse around when we excluded attic area and we limited it at that usable space to like sixty percent of the, I mean, there was some.
There is a way of, there, there, criteria that exempts you from floor area for attics, yes.
The reason we had that in there was, we would much rather see a second-story attic conversion, you know, than a true second story that added ten more feet of height or whatever to the entire mass, so if it was something that was tucked within the single-story-looking roof line, by all means.
That's egregious, yeah.
You know, if you can get it in there, that's fine, because I think that was where we were coming with that, so if, if the mindset is still the same, I don't think it would be any different here, like, if you can get that in it, but the building itself appears as a single story, but you have an attic in there that you can get three, four hundred square feet or two hundred square feet of usable area.
I, I, I guess, I, I'm just, I, I, I mean, you're the attorney, so you're guessing this better than I, but somehow I think it doesn't quite fit to, to kind of, you know, say, you can do this, but you can have a CUP to do another part of it, isn't gonna fly.
Well, that's the most conservative.
It seems to me that if we did wanna go down that road, wouldn't we be better off just saying the height matches the underlying zone, because then it's clear we're not creating rules just to screw over second units, I mean, we're, we're saying, look, you can build a second unit, it's ministerial, but it's just, it's just an issue of the, of the envelope. If you squish the envelope to one of these places, then we do design review. It's the same thing, if you build on a hillside, we do this, it's not the issue of the second unit. If you do a second unit and you fit within this part, you can do it ministerially, that, that to me seems a stronger argument than having a part in the, the second unit ordinance that says, you can do this, but then with a CUP, you could do that, but they're both, they're both. But they're both, they're both trying to push the envelope on what we can do.
Well, what I, what I wanted to add to that is that would be better if we can do something like that, have, have our cake and eat it too. But we also need to understand, like, if we go to 15 feet, like, if we have some height value in here and now you're allowed to big, build a bigger second unit, you know, than what we have on the books. You know, it's not unforeseen that you can have a structure that's albeit in the back or the rear or whatever, that's 40 feet by 30 feet or something, that's 14 feet tall at five feet back. And it's a single story, you know, it's, it's just, there's no floor in there, it's a single story. And I'm not talking about a conversion, I'm just talking about like, I've got dirt back there and I can do it. And you have neighbors, you know, on two sides, rear and side that potentially that could be an issue. And it's ministerial at that point, like, you, you can still do that. So if we're okay with that, then that's fine. But I'm just saying that, that's.
I have a, I mean, I, I have a.
They're bigger structures.
Well, yeah, but to a certain extent, it doesn't matter if we're okay with it or not. I mean, state law's telling us this is what you're going to do.
No, I know, but it's not telling us what the height of it is.
Well, but, you know, I, I guess I, my concern on the, on the height is it says we're, we're basically supposed to, except for certain things, we're supposed to have the rules of our existing underlying code apply. And so if we have a rule that says accessory structures can be this high, but for some reason we're saying second units are, are less.
Say that.
Well, it would be if we went to 12.
Well, maybe we should just change the rule on accessory structures to 12 for everything.
No, it, I don't think there's anything in there.
It's an option.
We're not, we're not mandated to match what the height of the accessory structure.
Well, we're not, that.
It has to be reasonable.
But, yes, but, but it seemed reasonable, given that, like, other accessory structures are allowed to be up to 15 feet, so why wouldn't you?
Didn't that come from the people on Victoria Lane that ordered the tough, their, whose neighbors dropped in a tough shed that was 15 feet tall? Isn't that why that came?
I don't know.
I can't remember that.
But I mean, you, you have to look at what.
At the corner of Victoria Lane in, in Baldwin.
In front of their house, right, wasn't it in front of their house?
There was a, the rear, the, the neighbor dropped in a tough shed that was 15 feet tall. And that's like, everybody went, whoa, how can they do that?
It was a Dutch barn looking?
Dutch barn.
Wasn't it a Dutch barn?
Yeah.
But our, to be fair, accessory structures, I mean, I have to go to R1 to see, what does that encompass? It doesn't encompass 1,200 square foot living habitable buildings, basically.
True.
Right, it's like sheds or storage or gazebo or something.
I mean, like, I know you could put a shed up to 120, 120 square feet. Are there accessory structures?
A gazebo, an arbor.
I mean, can they be bigger than 120 square feet, accessory structures?
Oh, yes.
Without a conditional.
Yes, they can. The 120 square feet is just for building permit. If it's up to 120 square feet, you don't need a building permit, but you still need to comply with setbacks.
Can you have any size, is there any limit on accessory structures at all?
No, it's limited by your floor area, maximum allowable floor area. It is, it is limited if you want to get up to a certain distance from setback. But if it's larger than that, then you have to comply with the regular setbacks for primary.
These are not habitable stru, and they're not dwelling units, they're storage units, sheds.
No, you can use them as a pool house or a guest house.
Right.
Yeah, it could be a guest house, but they can't be a dwelling unit.
Guest house is just a second unit without a kitchen. I mean, it's, it's, it functions really similarly. It's just granny has to come into the main house to get her dinner instead of cooking it out there.
Or she's using her microwave.
Right, right.
More likely.
Don't, don't, don't say that, that's. But also in, in the hillside zone, I, I mean, we just, we define a building envelope, right? We don't really say accessory structures are, are shorter than. So what we're, we're creating an artificial low limit in hillside that we don't have by, by saying all second units are 15 feet. I don't know if that is unreasonable under, who knows how to.
If you, if, if you establish a height limit here in this ordinance, then it would apply to hillside as well.
Right, I know.
It applies to anywhere where you allow a second unit. So you don't have to go to each one of those and try to, you know, establish a, a height limit.
Yeah, that's, that's my concern.
And to me, if, if we're going to go down the route of potentially having our cake and eating it too and having, like, you can have this by right, but if you want to have a second unit, second story, second story, second unit, then we have another avenue for you. But, and if that works, that's great. I think here, I, I would not be in favor, I, I would like to leave it as, at 12 and leave it like the way we measure it, you know, whatever, until we can get around. Because the height measurement, I think, needs to apply, it needs to be uniform across, like, R1, the way we measure height, you know, and the way we measure for this should be the same. I don't think this, this is where we should start putting in, well, here you're going to measure to the ridge, but in R1, for a main dwelling, it's going to be a third of the pitch or whatever.
And perhaps you would consider then differentiating if it's an existing and if it's a new, if it's new, then it would be 12 feet perhaps. And if it's existing, can be 15 because considering that that bulk is already there. So you're not really impacting further.
Existing meaning like a conversion?
Right.
If it's a conversion, you'd allow perhaps 15, which is the more typical, as measured according to the underlying zone. And if it's new, it would be 12. Is that something that?
Sure, but when you, when you say conversion, doesn't that fall into, like, if I'm going to convert it, it has to stay within the, what, what's there?
Within the envelope of what's there, yeah.
Right?
Well, you can.
Unless.
I mean, that's a question for you.
No, I think that's what we were talking about.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I would.
Let's say you took a garage and you want to convert to a second unit. You're going to, and it's a conversion by definition that will have, it's, you're staying within what's there.
Whatever envelope you have.
What the original envelope was, I'm very comfortable with that. Because that's not going to appear any different to the community.
What's already there.
And the building will look the same, it'll just be the interior and it's.
The use would be different.
The use will be different only.
I mean, it's like a conditional use permit, the building remains the same, but the use has changed.
So I don't think we would need a, a height designation for that.
Because you're already covering that under, under the definition of conversion.
Okay, so, here's a question for you. Can I do then a second story?
Not you, but he can.
A second story, a, a two-story house with a CUP and, and in the same application, a conversion to convert the second-story part of it, which you've approved, CUP to a second unit? Because, because you can do, if I wait a year, I can do that under, under your.
Repeat it?
Okay, so we're saying you can only do one-story second units, right? That, that's where we're coming here now. So, but you can do two-story other buildings that are not second units, right?
No kitchen, you build a little, a pool, a guest house, no kitchen.
This is, this is a guest house, right? So I get a CUP for my guest house, whether it's attached over a garage, whatever. And then it's, some period of time passes and I come back and say, now I'm going to convert my guest house to a second unit. And guess what? Same exterior, so I can convert it.
You're very devious.
So there, there I've got my, my second unit with my two stories. But now I'm going to take my time period that's some period of time and collapse it to zero and do both applications all at once. And there I get exactly what, I think what we want too, because you, you have to do a CUP to get the second story.
Well, but, but you would, you would have gone through the CUP process. And so you would end up with a building that was acceptable. We would have to look at it. A building that was acceptable because it has to master all the things. If you want to convert that, that wouldn't be a problem to me, actually.
Yeah, we would still have oversight on the, on the.
We would have had oversight over the, over the, the volume and the whatever, the, the envelope of that building. I don't actually see a problem with that, do you?
No, that, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
How does that affect this?
Because we limit this to, we limit the, the new building to 12 feet. We limit the conversion to within existing envelope, right? And, and if you want to have a two, want to build a two-story new thing and convert it later on into this.
You just do.
It would have gone through the CUP process to build that second story. It would come to us to build a second story.
Or if it's new, but we're, if it's existing, people have already gotten used to it.
Right. But even if they built it with a CUP, we at least had oversight on the initial construction.
Right, because what we really care about on those is what it looks like.
And how close it is to the neighbors and stuff, you know, the, the privacy issues.
Or, or hillside development permit is in the hillside or whatever.
I think that is a reasonable way to look at it. And we also limit the new ones to 12 feet.
I think this should just stay, the height should stay for now.
12 feet, all right, can we, can we start? Does anyone need to take a break? If I want a break, no? Good, okay. Let's, let's, can we start at the beginning and go through this bit by bit and see what we think of the language in it and what we can agree on and what we need to have more discussion on?
Don't we agree on everything except for the height?
I think we're good with everything but the height part. And then this definition of a conversion.
Does every, would everyone like to have that definition of conversion?
Yes.
Is anyone disagreeing with that? So we'll have a.
The, this, the SB 1069 talks about conversion, they don't define it though. Is it, is it defined elsewhere in state law?
Probably, but off, off the top of my head, I can't.
So I guess that begs the question, do we then have the authority to make our own definition of?
Define conversion.
I think you do, I think you can, it's, it's reasonable to say conversion is within the envelope of the existing building.
I think that's, that seems completely reasonable to me.
Yeah, I would agree.
Because I think if it, if you change the envelope, then it's new construction, I mean, it's.
And it's, it would tend to be less expensive for the person wanting a second unit and less impact on the neighborhood. Because as you say, the, that shape of structure and building is already there. Everybody wins.
But if it's, if, you could convert another building or a garage, right? If you have a guest house, you could convert it, that would be the simplest thing to do.
Right.
That is not an, is, issue to me. If a garage is converted, we have the right to say, this house requires two covered parking spaces. You have to have those, you can't convert the garage unless you have two covered parking spaces. Or do we just have to provide two? They have to have spaces for the, for the main house. They have to have, but does it have to be covered or not?
No.
For the unit itself, it does not have to be.
I'm talking about the main house.
But a conversion.
For the main house.
Or you take the main house.
That's really the question is, and do we have.
It says in.
Now, where the primary structure must have covered parking when the primary structure was approved, that covered parking was required. If that was not a requirement, then it doesn't matter.
When it was built or when it?
But it says, Terry, in, in the 1069, 65852.2.
Well, you can't remove.
Whatever, yeah, whatever.
It says, "When a garage, carport or covered parking structure is demolished in conjunction with the construction of accessory dwelling unit, the local agency requires that the off-street parking be replaced. The replacement spaces," so that's for the main house.
Yeah.
"may be located in any configuration on the same lot as the accessory dwelling unit, included but not limited to as covered spaces, uncovered spaces, or tandem spaces, or by the use of mechanical automobile parking license." Well, that's great.
What does, what does, what does, what does may, what does may mean in this case?
It, it's.
It is permissive that it can be anything?
It's permissive that you have the choice of how you're going to.
Who has the choice? The city has a choice or the?
The city has the choice.
Or does the, the owner of the property have the choice?
The city has the, the city has the choice among those things.
So the city can require covered parking?
But it says, it says.
Didn't say, that's, that's the problem is that you cannot require covered parking.
Yeah, I think they can park wherever.
For placement, they can, they can do.
Oh, for the accessory dwelling.
No, I'm talking about the, how, the original building.
And let me go back. If you, this is one of the, this is one of the issues, I think. If you allow a garage conversion, there's nothing in the statute that says you have to allow a garage to be converted in order to achieve an accessory dwelling unit. It's one of the ways to get one. And the problem for jurisdictions that require covered parking, some do.
Which we do.
For the primary dwelling unit. The primary dwelling unit was built with a garage, whether attached or degra, or detached at the time that it was there. And now you're going to take away that required covered parking that's required for the primary dwelling unit in order to accommodate the accessory dwelling unit. And the statute is telling us, if you allow a garage conversion and you still need, you know, to provide the parking, you can, you basically have to allow them to provide it in almost any configuration.
And we can't repair.
Tandem parking, uncovered parking, the car lift thing. And so that factors into your decision as to whether you will even allow a garage conversion.
I would be inclined to not offer garage conversions. If everyone else in the zone is required to have covered parking.
That, this is why, this, the state has now made it easy for us.
Can we say, can we say we can convert anything, any structure other than a garage?
I think if we were to say you cannot make a garage conversion, you, you would have to have a reason. Well, let me, let me back up from there. You do not have, you, there is nothing in the statute that gives a right to a garage conversion. It's merely one of the forms of getting a second unit. So I think that, yes, you could say we don't allow garage conversions, but I would want to go on to say why. Otherwise, it, it sounds like you're trying to throw unnecessary roadblocks.
Well, because the envelope isn't constructed the same as a, a home. It's not, doesn't meet Title 24, it's not insulated, it's not, yeah, it's not structurally the same.
Can we say we will do not permit conversion of, of garages because? You can only convert a garage if that garage is not used to meet the required covered parking in that zone.
Where can, I would say something like where conversion of the garage would be a violation of zoning code regarding parking requirements for the primary structure, a garage conversion is not permitted.
That's what I would like to see. Because in this zone, in R1, covered parking is required, right? Yes, it is required. And I think that to take away that covered parking requirement is not fair to the other people in the zone. It's not fair to the people living in the house, right? Because now, you know, everyone else has to have this covered parking and.
Well, that, that's the difficult thing. Because what if you had a house that was, you know, that's 100 years old, there was no parking at the time. So, and it's legal non-conforming, so.
Right, yeah.
We need to be careful how we, and that, that's why it's one of the conundrums is.
Most, most people don't use their garage for parking anyway.
There's that.
There's that, yeah.
And, and, and I can easily foresee, if you have, if you have a big enough lot to even consider going down this road, you probably have, you know, a few spaces next to, next to this building or whatever that you could put, you know, grasscrete on and you can park there and, you know, the, the trend is smaller cars and whatever, so I don't know.
Especially because it says.
It may not be a problem for you, maybe better planning, go, go ahead.
It also says that the city, if the only place you can have place for parking, they have to do it in the setback area, right?
Right.
It says in here, so you could, you could require the front yard to be turned into parking lot for all the, you know, for three spaces for this house, which to me is horrible. That's a really horrible outcome of this.
Yes and no. I, I, I have this thing, like, if you come to our street, we have 100-year-old houses, very few garages. People park in the driveway, which is in the front.
I don't mind the driveway.
But it's, it's in the front.
Yeah, but I'm thinking of the front, what if, you know, what if you have a narrow driveway and you have to park everyone in front of the house?
Yeah, we, they, while they park and we see our neighbors' cars and it's fine. Like, it's not, I don't know, to me, it's like.
But that's an R2 zone.
It's not a parking lot.
I'm, I, I'm imagining the worst cake scenario, which is you have all the cars lined up right in front of the house and there's, the whole setback is full of cars parked there. I've seen houses like that, not so much in Sierra Madre, but other places where the front yard is just a parking lot. I, I know places in Pasadena like that, and that's nasty.
I, I, I think, I'm sympathetic to the height requirement. I like the idea of the concept of conversion. Because I think at the end of the day, this, the state law is encouraging some kind of changes on property to allow.
Second units.
Second units. And I think for the city of Sierra Madre, the easiest way for that pill to go down is to take existing units and convert their use as opposed to building new things. But having a, a, a sentence in, in the, in our new text that says, if you are going to build a two-story, then you need to come to us to talk about it. So we will allow the, the conversion, as we define conversion, which is nothing larger than the existing envelope. So if you've got a, if you've got a two-story, a two-car garage and it's 450 square feet, you're going to end up with a 450 square foot second unit. And, and I think that, I think the community can live with that. And, and as you say, that there are going to be a lot more cars in the driveway than there are off, but it's, they're still off the street, which I think is the, the other. Than there are off, but it's, they're still off the street, which I think is the, the other, you know, point of issue.
But I do think that. A lot bigger than apartments.
But I, I do think that the, that the height requirement somehow in there, well, if they're going to do the, if the, if the conversion, if the definition of conversion is to keep the same envelope, then you won't need the height requirement unless it comes to a CUP.
You won't need a height requirement, because you're, you're basically saying, you have to stay within this.
But.
For that, but we would need a height for a new structure.
For new construction, you would need a height requirement.
Right.
With the definition of conversion, we don't need to, so really, the height requirement only applies to new construction. And we could also state, if this is where you're going, that an exception to the ministerial procedure for, for new construction, where a second story is desired, will require a conditional use permit. It's an exception, but only if you want the second story.
Yeah.
For new construction only. But we will let you, under our definition of conversion, put, you know, convert an existing two-story or a structure into a second unit.
Because it's already there.
Because it's already there.
It's, it's in the community.
Or an existing garage that's higher than twelve, than our twelve-foot.
So why don't we just not put the exception in? Just let someone build it and then convert it later.
I mean, I would not put the exception. I would just say it has to be a one-story building.
Okay, then there's, then there's, I would accept.
Then the issue I have, I have with the conversion is, is to say, we let you convert neon skin, but you can't make it bigger. But why can't you make it bigger if you're not making it bigger in a problematic place? Like, if you have too small of a setback, yeah, I don't want you to invade that. But if you've got one of those little guest houses in the back, in the corner, you've got a lot of backyard to come towards the house. Who cares if, I mean, that's not hurting the neighbor if they.
Well, that's not a conversion, that's new construction.
Well, then, but if they're, but they're going to convert the existing.
Well, the existing, that's fine, they can convert that, fine. But if, if they want to build a new structure, then it has to be this twelve-foot height.
Right, right, but I'm saying, let's say you've got, you know, this guest house in the back, right? And you want to convert it to a second unit, and it's, say, right now it's four hundred feet, and you want it to be six hundred feet. I don't have any problem with them adding that two hundred square feet, as long as it, it, one story, right? As long as it doesn't go, invade the setbacks at all.
Well, yeah, I don't think anyone's disagreeing with that.
But we're procuring that when you do a conversion, is what you're doing.
Yeah, it's not a conversion.
Finding conversion as being in the same envelope, we've, we've gone against that.
Can't do what you just said.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That would be new construction.
But no, because part of it would be a conversion, and the new part would be new construction. And we're not saying you can't build new construction.
So are you going to do two permits?
Well, it'd be.
Terry, if you're converting, I mean, the existing structure, according to that definition, you cannot expand the envelope, but it's eight hundred square feet, aren't you essentially recruiting them from reaching, achieving the twelve hundred that they are allowed in this ordinance?
I don't think so, because it would be their choice, if that's what they want to do, just convert an existing eight hundred square foot structure. That's a conversion. But no one's saying that, assuming that they have the lot coverage available to them, they could come in, they could say, and it would be ministerial, I want, you know, I've got the coverage for it, I want to add four hundred square feet to this existing eight hundred square foot guest house, and I'm going to make it a second unit, a legal second unit. And they could, as long as it doesn't exceed the twelve or fifteen-foot height, because it really now becomes new construction, because they're adding.
What does it fall, does it bypass being a conversion at that point and become new construction?
I think it becomes new construction if we, if we.
Add anything to it.
Mm-hmm. Right. If we define conversion as within the envelope of an existing building. And the purpose of that is to try to give more leeway to people without violating the, yeah, state law that we can't do.
So in John's example, then, they would come for a CUP if they wanted to take that four hundred and fifty square foot garage and make it, you know, add another two hundred and fifty square feet?
No, they could do it ministerially.
They could do it ministerially.
It's new construction.
Second floor.
Not second floor, but you were saying if it was just a guest house.
And you wanted to make it a bigger guest house with a one-story addition, one-floor addition.
You can do that, you can do that ministerially, it's new construction.
If it's state.
It's not a conversion.
Yeah.
I know that sounds odd.
Just let me understand the, the way, the order you do this. If you have this guest house, right?
It's already there.
You would do your two hundred square foot addition to the guest house, and then you'd have a six hundred square foot guest house that you'd then convert.
Well, I think you would get it, when you, when you do the addition, that you, when you get that permit ministerially, that's, that's it. It's, it's, you don't need to go and then apply for a conversion.
Okay, but here, here's the thing.
It's a second unit.
Let's say my guest house is four hundred square feet, and it's seventeen feet tall, right? So if, and then I'm going to add two hundred square feet on the first floor. So if it's new construction, then I can't have it be a second unit.
And he's getting around the height requirement, but you know what, I'd, I'd be willing to take my chance. Given that example, I'd be willing to take my chances on that.
So, but if you wanted to, so someone could then just say, okay, guest house, I can do seventeen feet, boom. I'd do the guest house to six hundred feet, and then I'd convert.
But you'd have to get a permit to do the, the additional square footage.
Right.
And, and that may have to go through all kinds of other kinds of, so there would still be some oversight there.
Right, and as, as long as you're not going over your CUP limit, or the, this, the second story, you don't need a CUP.
Right. That's, that's the gamble we're taking.
Did it work? I don't know, I, I got lost.
Do you have a better idea? You got a better idea, John? I'm just.
You have the best ideas.
Well, I think, I think what you are getting at is not to have this, the conversion, because that restricts, it kind of bifurcates like.
No, I'm fine with the conversion, I just, I just think that if we say you can only convert in the existing envelope, there's reasons why we would want to let someone, as one application, instead of making people jump through these weird hoops.
And you're saying we're not, by restricting it, we don't do that.
Right, so I would say, don't, we say you can convert in the existing, but if you're going to add any on, it has to comply with the rules for second.
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's completely what I'm thinking.
That's what I think.
That's, that's what I'm thinking, that's what I'm thinking.
All right.
I think we're there.
Are we there?
We're there.
Okay, so we're back to the more conservative, no CUP.
Mm-hmm, yes.
But, and we're going to go with the, is it twelve foot?
Twelve foot, yes.
We're going to stick with that because.
And then a definition of conversion.
Yeah, okay.
But do you think that twelve feet is, given that our height for other accessory structures is fifteen feet, is twelve feet unreasonable?
I would say that it's not only because it's the way that it's measured. It's a second unit, it's a residential structure, measured in accordance with the underlying residential zone, which is the two.
So even though the measurement is different, we're measuring the same way.
Are they?
Yeah.
Are, are the accessory structures measured the same way?
They're measured the same way, but they're not, I mean, they're unlimited, there's no limit to the height, it's, that limit, the twenty-five, that's the limit. There's no specific limit for accessory structure that's different than the primary structure.
Wow.
But it's measured the same way, it's measured from, you know, pre-existing or.
But the primary structure, like in R one, is twenty-five feet, right? So an accessory guest house or cabana is measured the same way?
They're the same way, and the height limit is the same as well.
Twenty-five feet.
Where did we come up with the fifteen then?
Well, the fifteen feet is, the fifteen feet is the height limit for single-story.
Single-story.
So in, in, in R one, a single-story detached garage is fifteen feet. And that's measured to the max height, either flat or doing the pitch thing.
That's a garage.
It's not measured to a third, it's measured to the highest point of the.
So that is a type of accessory structure, that's limited to fifteen.
Right, the other one.
It says that you can be two stories.
Right, detached accessory garages, which are greater than fifteen feet, have to conform to the primary structure rules.
Attached. What'd you say?
The primary structure.
Attached.
Attached or detached?
If, if they're greater than fifteen feet. So you can elect to do a two-story garage structure detached, and you use the primary structure rules.
Twenty-five.
Which is twenty-five.
And that goes to, kind of, your example originally, which was, forget even a second dwelling unit, just call it a guest house, cabana.
Right.
Studio, whatever, accessory, which is less limiting than this.
Right, and so.
And then go, and then.
And then go and convert it.
Right, and I, I'm fine with that, but, and that's, I think from our purposes for planning, that's great. But then the question is, by saying, you can do a two-story accessory structure that's not a second unit, but a second unit has to be one story, are we then unreasonably limiting second units?
Sounds to me like we might be.
I don't think that we're unreasonably limiting second units in terms of height. If the, if the intent is to make that height limitation relative to a first story, because we know that construction of a second story requires a CUP, which we can't do. So we're trying to be consistent, and the only way to be consistent with the law is to have a height limit that's reasonable, that doesn't create a second-story configuration, because that requires a CUP for everyone.
And I think twelve is fine, because I mean, the logic there is, if it's to the way we measure height to the third, by, by time it's to the plate, which is the wall, it's probably like ten feet, you know, or something, so.
But we, but we let other detached structures go to fifteen feet. So why, why are we saying second unit? No, not if they're one-story. I mean, we have these elaborate rules for one-story, but you can do two. I mean, I don't know why I would do that, but.
I mean, it seems like it's reasonable to limit it to what would be a one-story structure, because.
Which is fifteen.
The, the under, the underlying rules are that if you're going to get a second story, you have to get a CUP, and that seems.
Yeah.
So I don't know what that magic number is, is it twelve, is it fifteen?
I mean, I would love to make it twelve, but do you think it's reasonable that we can get away of doing that?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, that's what we have been doing.
Yes.
So I think the answer is.
Yes.
Yes. If, if it, if it makes sense, particularly given the way that you measure the roof line.
Yeah.
So it has been twelve up till now, so we just don't change what we have.
Right, we don't have to change what we have, we were just, because suddenly we've shifted so that, you know, in our conservative approach, there is no ability to add a second story, so, yeah.
What stops someone from doing a detached, one-story guest house? And that's ministerial.
To do it, yes.
And to fifteen feet, and then converting it, nothing. So why, why are we making them jump through two hoops? It's the, well, that's the point. A one-story guest house, which we allow without a CUP, looks the same as a one-story second unit.
It's got no, I mean, technically.
It doesn't have a kitchen.
It looks the same.
It looks the same from the outside, it doesn't have a kitchen.
Looks the same. I think we're required to let them do the same thing.
I think fifteen, I think staff's recommendation of fifteen feet.
If we do fifteen for a guest house, we should do fifteen for an accessory structure.
I think we have to. Because if you could build it as a guest house, you have to be allowed to do it the same, except for these issues of setback. But that's only if you're converting an existing garage, you get less setback, right?
Like, if you're putting a new structure, it's not going to be that close.
I think we're required to let it be fifteen feet, if we do it for a guest house.
Then it should be fifteen feet. It, it, it should not be more restrictive than a guest house.
I think that's the intent here, really, and I think.
Yeah, I think we need to do fifteen feet. It's very different.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah. Okay.
So then we just need to add a conversion.
Definition.
I think that's right, and we're, we're basically there.
I, I have one question on the, our definition of second unit that limits it to one bedroom and two, and occupancy of two persons, is that?
That's in the law, that's in the rule.
That's in, that's in our law.
It's our old, I think that's our old.
Existing definition.
That's our old definition, because remember, our second units were much smaller.
Right, right.
At one time, they were six hundred square feet, haven't changed the definition.
So is that, I guess my question, is that legal under ten sixty-nine? Because I've been trying to search through ten sixty-nine, and I, I can't find.
I don't remember seeing anything in the law that spoke to bedroom number.
But don't they also say, you can regulate bump, 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 and you can't regulate anything else? So I would think that that means you probably can't regulate occupancy, other than than to say it's a one-family unit.
The only place where we run into some problems is if the bedroom count starts to go up, then the parking requirement.
Yeah.
Right now, it would be one parking spot, right?
That's right, one bedroom is reasonable in the context of the parking and.
But ten sixty-nine says you can't ask for more than one parking space per bedroom, which leads me to believe that they would contemplate you could have more than one bedroom.
I think they leave it up to you.
And, and you would say.
Well, I think we say up to five bedrooms, it's, at five or more, it's free.
No, but I'm saying, well, what we say in our parking, and this is, we say one, because we only have one bedroom. But if, if we weren't, if we weren't allowed to limit the number of bedrooms, we could change the parking to say, you have to have one per bedroom.
Well, whatever the underlying, like, the underlying code, right?
Well, no, because the underlying code in R one would require two, even for one space.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm just trying to see what the, how they define it in here.
We do define conversions.
I mean, how do you hear?
And we do talk about a minimum, a minimum seven-foot-high ceiling.
Well, that's fifteen now.
Yep.
Um, question for the commission. Is with regards to full bath. A full bath typically means a bathtub. Do you wish to maintain that? Or is, a full bath means a shower and a bathtub?
A bathtub and a shower? Or a shower over a bathtub?
Right.
Well, shower would be three-quarter.
Do you wish to maintain that as a requirement, or?
As opposed to.
As opposed to a shower, a three-quarter.
Well, I think it should just be, I think what the language is trying to say is like, you got to have a.
You have to have a regular bathroom.
Complete bathroom, you know.
With the ability of bathing, whether it's a shower.
Right.
I think so too, especially because it could be granny's, you know?
It should not be.
It could be either one.
And I think less and less houses are putting in tubs.
Yeah. Yeah.
Two, you say contain, contain a bathroom.
Bathing.
You know, on this thing, it says sanitation shall, cooking and sanitation shall contain a full bath. I think you want to just strike full so that it doesn't.
Well, it might say, I think it may.
Regardless of whether it's three-quarter or.
And the definition for accessory dwelling unit under SB ten sixty-nine says, accessory dwelling unit means detached or detached residential dwelling unit, which provides complete independent living facilities for one or more, for one or more persons. It shall include permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation on the same parcel as the single-family dwelling is situated. Says for one or more persons.
One or more.
So how would you live at that anyway?
Yeah, I mean, somebody has a kid, how are you doing?
How do you know two or less, like, how do you?
Yeah, I mean, you can get pregnant and have children while you're living there, and, so it doesn't really specify. I mean, I think it has to have something to bathe, but I.
And it doesn't say, bedroom, it just says, there's no limitation.
There's nothing in here that I can see about bedroom count.
I mean, I think that if we're allowing up to twelve hundred square feet, it's kind of silly to say it has to only be one bedroom, personally.
Yeah, I think the assumption would be more, I mean.
Now, this does not limit you from having, say, a living room, and a dining room. It just says that it shall contain these rooms. But it doesn't, the way I read this.
You can also have the den, right?
So that, you know, the twelve hundred could be occupied with, even if you don't have an additional bedroom, that larger square footage could allow for now a dining room and a living room.
Why would this definition in ours basically mirror?
Because it mirrors probably a.
Because it mirrors an old version of the code.
Right.
No, no, why would it mirror ten sixty-nine?
Oh, you mean, why don't we change it that way?
Because it's basically saying, you got to have at least commiserate facilities.
Yeah, I agree, I think we should change where it says independent living facilities for no more than two persons. We should change that to for one or more persons, just to match the code, and then take out the. and then take out the not more than one bedroom.
I think so, too.
But, yeah, I mean, didn't ten sixty-nine rattle, was that, Vincent, did you read it from ten sixty-nine?
Yes, I did.
I mean, that covered that whole, like, it's gotta have X, Y, and Z, and.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, I would just as soon have it match it, because match the state ordinance, the state law, because, yes.
And this is the definition, so I think it should.
All right, so are we good there? Are we in agreement? Are we? Are we still thinking?
There's a lot of them in our studios. The smaller ones, right?
Yeah. And that's fine.
I was thinking of the twelve hundred square feet.
Yeah, the twelve hundred, yeah, it's a big studio.
But I mean, if you're an artist, you might love a space like that.
Right.
Like a loft, you know, where you can.
You could build and test drones at home.
You could build, you know, a giant place for painting and making sculptures and stuff, so. Okay, all right, so.
Where are we?
Yeah, where are we?
So we're gonna use the same definition.
The same definition for the.
In SB ten sixty-nine.
Yeah. And then we're gonna add this information about conversion. We're gonna limit it, have it fifteen feet, because it matches other one-story accessory structures.
And in short-term rental, we're going to add less than thirty days.
Less than thirty days.
And can we strike the part that says, and is a prohibited use in the city of Serra Madre? Because the real definition is it's.
Right, it's not part of the definition.
Because we say it twice.
It's in there again, so, yeah, I think that's a good idea. Okay. All right.
So I.
Any other comments?
No, I'm good with that. And I also, I'm good with delegating to staff and council to write the conversion provision that we discussed. I don't think we need.
I think they they know what we're talking about. All right, given those changes, would someone like to make a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break. All right, that was a really good discussion, I have to say. Now on to the next item. Matt is not here, but he was going to recuse himself from this item. So we'll.
But it's, isn't it, does he have to?
He does not have to, but.
What he explained to me, his concern, since he's not here to put it into the record, I'll put it into the record, what was explained to me, is that because he lives next door to the house that was the. Inspiration for the demolition ordinance in the first place. And what has been happening with this house, that house, is now the inspiration for the amendments we are about to look at this evening. The fact that he lives right next door to it, he felt it would be better for him to recuse himself, so that no member of the community, including his next-door neighbor, might find his participation untoward.
Thank you. With that, we'll start with the staff report on this item.
We are reviewing the discretionary demolition permit as a discussion item. And this was codified under chapter seventeen sixty, zero point five six of the Serra Madre municipal code. It originally was adopted by the city council at last revision on March tenth, twenty fifteen, which is establishing a discretionary review process for the demolition of single-family houses and duplexes seventy-five years and older. Concerns have been raised by the planning commission and community regarding the practical application of the discretionary demolition permit process specific to the requirement to obtain a historical resource evaluation report and the twenty-five percent construction exemption requirement.
Hold on for a second. Matt, we, she explained why you want to recuse yourself.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I came in back, or back in late.
But.
Yeah, I'm gonna recuse myself from this discussion, so. See y'all next time.
So staff has prepared a draft ordinance that illustrates the modified discretionary demolition permit process for residential structures over seventy-five years of age or older, and is provided for discussion for the commission. So I've included a redline version of the ordinance as attachment A. The commission also wanted to address the issuance of penalties to determine if they should be revised. And staff surveyed four San Gabriel Valley cities to determine penalties imposed for the demolition in part or in whole of single-family dwellings without a permit. And the results of that survey are also attached to your report as exhibit B. Commissioner Hutt also had some revisions to the ordinance presented by staff. And if I could defer your attention to the exhibit A that's at the dais. And also Commissioner Hutt did provide a couple of other modifications, suggested modifications to two other sections that are also at the dais. Section one oh five point seven demolition permits and one oh, one fifteen point five, two point zero six oh calculation of fees. But we'll go ahead and begin with exhibit A. So exhibit A discretionary demolition permit seventeen point sixty, point zero five six. Definition is, there's a proposed modification. The definition reads, for purposes of this section, demolition is defined as the destruction and removal in part or in whole of the foundation, exterior walls. We are proposing to add supporting members and exterior siding or roof structure. And remainder, remaining portion of the sentence, including supporting members of a single-family dwelling or duplex will be removed.
Okay, with that, so, well, I've got one sort of nitpicky point there. When you say, I know what I think you mean when you say exterior siding, which is any, basically, exterior cladding or finished material, right?
That's correct.
But it could also be construed as meaning siding, literally, like, just siding, as opposed to an exterior plaster or something, so. Seems like you want to broaden that.
Something like exterior siding, shingles, or other finish.
Finished cladding or finished cladding material.
Exterior finished cladding material.
Yeah, something like that, which is generic, so it could mean, you know, on a Spanish home, it could be the plaster.
Stucco plaster.
The adobe, or I don't know.
Yeah, wood.
The other, the other issue.
I was thinking that, too.
Including that as a demolition is we're not really stating how much removal would consider demolition.
Of that?
It's any part.
Any part.
I think it would be.
Right, in that case, once we go through this, it could kick in quite a few buildings, even a smaller remodel or replacement of existing some cladding. Then it could kick in a requirement as we present further down. Could require a historic resources evaluation report, or even a small replacement or portion of.
So it would have to be for a structure that's seventy-five or older.
Right.
So if you have three boards that are eaten up by termites, and you want to replace the three boards, you know?
There's some minor discretion for the director, you know, for maintenance or replacements, right? I mean, that's in here.
Is that written into this?
Yes, there is. It's under number two, removal and replacement. That is for minor alterations. Exterior windows, but, yeah, doors, roof covering, architectural details, and other structural or decorative elements.
But we struck exterior siding in that, right?
We would have to put that back in, in order to.
In the same wording as you.
Yeah, we would have, well.
But I think, oh, it says deemed to be minor alterations, right?
Does this generally only apply for the level of maintenance that a building permit is required? Or would this kick in even without the requirement of a building permit?
Even without the requirement for building permit.
Because I know, like, a lot of times. Well, yeah, I mean, you know, like, I'm just thinking of maintenance, you know, you're, if you're putting in a new faucet or doing any kind of exterior changes, really minor ones, a lot of times, you know, you've got a crack and you repair it. You're not gonna get a building permit to repair a crack in your siding. Or if, you know, a tree falls in and does a little small thing, you wouldn't get a permit for that. But under this, you would have to come in for, I mean.
Well, it says subject to any required permits here, in number two.
And it is an exception to the demolition.
It says subject to required permits. Any, any.
I'm sorry, which number?
This is under F two.
F two.
F two, so it says removal and replacement subject to any required permits.
So does that mean if it doesn't require a permit, this wouldn't apply?
Yeah.
No, it's subject to any, you're still subject to any building or whatever other permits you're required. You're just not subject to the discretionary demolition permit.
So let's say.
You redo the siding?
Yeah, so let's say my kid is playing baseball and whacks the ball into the siding and makes a big crack. It's like this, and I go down to, you know, Home Depot and buy a box of fix-it, stucco. I need to go to the director and say, hey, look, here's a picture of what happened. I want to patch this up, that's cool, right?
Well, you're not removing and replacing it, if you're just patching it.
But the way you do that, if it's cracked, is you tear off the part that's.
Yeah.
I mean, this is stucco, right? You tear off until you get a flat part, and then you patch it back up. And it's all of this big, but that's still technically what you're doing.
You may or may not need a building permit to do that, but what this says is that you don't need a discretionary demolition permit for that, because you are exempt as a removal and replacement.
I know, but the director has to deem that it's a minor alteration. So I can't just assume that. I've got to go down to the director and say, look, here's this one-foot square patch I want to do. Is that cool?
No one.
Well, yeah, I don't know who's really gonna do that, but I'm trying to think about how this.
I was reading this in a different way. I was reading, I was reading it that if you're doing work that's subject to needing a permit, minor work, then this applies to it. That's how.
My fundamental question.
But but you'd have to take out the commas to make it mean that. If you took out the commas, I was reading that if you would require a permit to do this work, then you get somehow, you don't have to.
It's subject to any required permits. If a permit is not required, then you're not required to get the permit.
And then you don't have to come, you're not expected to come down and talk to someone about it.
You still do, because if this is a house that is seventy-five years or older, you are still, to begin with, you're subject to this. But under this, there are some exceptions that could take you away from that requirement, and that's one of them. If you, if you, if the director then deems that this is a minor alteration, then you don't need a discretionary demolition permit. And it doesn't mean that you are only required to ask if you need a building permit. That's, to me, I read subject to any required permits. If you, just saying that you need, you still need to get any required permits.
It's not, the language here is not clear.
Subject to any required permits?
Yes, it's not clear.
But it's trying to say that you're not exempt from getting a building permit or a plumbing.
What I'm, what I'm thinking is it's saying removal and replacement subject to any required permits. It, to me, this sentence doesn't make sense. I'm not, I'm not.
You can add a sentence at the end that says, you know, to the effect that you still have to get, you know, if, if the work is subject to a.
Permit, you have to get a permit.
You still have to get that permit.
And I think that.
Do we require a permit for, like, just to re-side?
For siding?
Like if you take the siding off?
Yes, yes, that is a building permit.
I, I think going back.
Put it back?
And, and going back to B, the definition of, of demolition, you need to add the, the architectural details. Because we have, we have houses with corbels, we have houses that have, what's, the, that southwest with the, with the posts that come out of the.
Uh huh.
Okay, and somebody could come along, just cut those off, and now they got just a, you know.
The Vegas.
A stucco house and they've changed the. So I, I think you need to probably add architectural details to the, to the demolition definitions.
How about porches?
Porches? Yeah. If it was built with a porch.
Yeah. That's a really important part of architecture of many styles.
Yeah.
Of architecture.
Right, right.
Grassmen, also.
Sleeping porches, too?
Yeah.
So they don't enclose them and make them into a room?
And portico chaise, you know, where you have that on the side of your skirt. I had one of those in the house I grew up in, which was an integral part of the house, so, yeah.
Are we at, we're.
We're back at, we're back at B.
We're back at B, working our way down.
Yeah.
Under seat. We'll add porches and architectural details to the definition of, item B. Going down to D.
Pardon me? Chimneys, yeah. Yeah.
Can we just put anything on the outside? Well, I mean, that's almost what we're getting at, isn't it?
Yeah, et cetera. And other architectural features.
No, I think that covers it, though, like architectural.
Architectural details, pretty much covers.
Details could be the kind of windows or something like that, you know, so they don't come in and put in all, you know, casement windows.
The doors could be.
Light fixtures.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, I think architectural details is a nicely broad term. Okay.
C, we added, uh, structure, so it says no structure, eliminated single-family dwelling or duplex.
So it could be a building that's other than a living, a place where people live.
Well, also, it would be beyond just a house.
Right.
Right.
We're expanding to multifamily institutional, commercial.
Commercial buildings, yeah.
So we made it more broad.
Right.
Yeah, that's good.
Would that include the shed?
Yeah, I was just guessing.
Yep.
Structure, structure.
Seventy-five-year-old.
It's anything built, right?
But a lot of, you know, tool sheds aren't seventy-five, I mean, you can have a lot of his, like, older houses that have sort of those things put up later. And it's, it's not.
That craned-in shed.
The way I would read this is not that anything on the site is seventy-five years, you have to protect all of it. It's only the things that are actually seventy-five years old.
But see, that's, this is where the historical assessment comes in.
Yeah.
Because they can decide that the, no, that isn't seventy-five, but the house is, kind of thing.
But just a scenario, so you can.
Yeah.
So if somebody comes to the county and wants to demolish a shed and they don't know how long it's been there, it's very old, we would require a historic assessment of the shed.
Oh, that's crazy.
Could be twenty-five hundred dollars or more.
No, more.
I, I'm just throwing that out there because.
Well, I've got a worst case for you, that there's a, there's a lot on Grove across, behind the Penny House that used to be the Penny House's, uh, stable that is now a house. Because I used to own it.
Is it seventy-five years old?
I, I.
Yeah, probably.
Well, I think that, you know.
That's, that's just.
On the.
It's not a great structure, it's nothing that you would write home about.
You have, under F three, the exceptions is any proposed demolition of a structure constructed less than seventy-five years from the date of application. And so if you have a shed and you don't know, I, I mean, I, I think you'd try to make your best guess. There's a lot of them that I think it's pretty obvious. You know, I guess what I'm saying is, just because you don't know exactly, doesn't mean you're not going to be able to figure a lot of these out.
Right, I mean, you could look at it and know whether it's one or twenty-five or fifty or seventy-five, probably.
And the other thing is, I think, you know, getting, harping on this issue again, if we had a historic survey, we would know. We would know all of this stuff. And so the problem is, you know, we, we tried to draft an ordinance without a survey that would catch the big problems and allow a few exceptions, and we found out we have too many exceptions. And so now we're trying to close the loophole, and in doing that, we're probably going to get a lot of places where people are going to be required to do historic surveys that you wouldn't think makes sense.
Yeah, but I get it.
And so.
I'm not, I, I hear you, but like, that example, if that happened, to me, that's, that's nuts.
Yeah.
And.
Can we get, you know.
And the historic surveys are not.
Yeah, but you, no, but keep in mind, we had, we had, we had a person who had a property that was listed on the historic list. And, um, and part of the features of that house was a carriage house.
Right.
And it wasn't a big structure, but it certainly was historic. And, and the, and the review that put that house on even mentioned that, that structure. And they demoed that without a permit. And that's one of the reasons why we came to this. So you, you can have accessory structures that are historic that are, and that are important and contribute to the thing. You can also have, you know, tough sheds.
Right.
Thankfully, most of those aren't seventy-five years old.
Is there some discretion there to, like, I mean, it seems like it's a common sense thing.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like there ought to be some common sense discretion if someone has, you know, a falling apart old shed that.
Sears and Roebuck shed from nineteen twenty or something.
Yeah, I mean, I just think, I mean, that could be part of the historical context of a building, actually. But, you know.
But what is the community value? I think the community value, lately, I, I believe that the community value is that we try not to discard anything of value.
Yeah.
And, um, without at least some due process for the building, if you want to look at it that way. And, um, so.
I mean, there ought to be some.
If we need to air, we probably need to air on the side that, you know, is this, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just wondering if, I, I, I don't, I don't know how these actual, architectural historian people work. But it would be really nice if there could be a minor report, you know? And I'm sure there's not, because they have to make their living.
No, I mean, the argument is, which is valid, when they have to look into a property.
Yeah.
It, it's irrelevant whether they're looking in for this little piece or.
Right.
You know, they still have to do the research.
Well, and you can't, you can't evaluate whether an accessory structure is a contributing element without knowing if the primary structure is historic to begin with. So, you're, no, you're not going to get a minor report, you're going to get a full report.
We need to leave it the way it is.
And actually, if we get a full report, we keep a copy of it and it contributes to our total assessment of all the structures in the town, so.
Leave it.
Twenty-five hundred to five thousand or more?
Or more. Depends on who you call.
Yeah.
But it's not.
But I think five thousand is a good round number.
Okay. Continue, please.
D, under procedures, we added a new Roman numeral four. The reviewing body for a demolition permit shall be the same body or individual that would review and approve the accompanying replacement development project. What was omitted is, um, two sub-sections, one and two. The first one that was omitted, and it's basically, we were trying to clean up some of the language in terms of who the reviewing body is, whether it's the commission or director. So what, uh, we omitted was reviewing body for demolition permit and accompanying replacement development project, which would not require a CUP or variance. Under seventeen point sixty point zero three zero is the planning director. And number two, the reviewing body for demolition permit and or accompanying replacement development project, which would require a conditional use permit or variance or minor conditional use permit is the planning commission.
Yeah.
Basically, we just simplified the language.
Yeah.
That was one of John Hutt's.
Yeah, and it also, it catches, like, hillside development permit would sort of fall through the cracks here, so.
Yeah.
Good.
Just clarifying.
I like it. E, a discretionary demolition permit may be approved if the reviewing body makes one of the following determinations.
So it's a positive rather than a negative statement at the start of this.
And we struck no discretionary demolition permit shall be approved unless the reviewing body determines one of the following.
That's just clearer language.
Item F, exceptions, the following applications do not require a discretionary demolition permit. And this is where we omitted, um.
Twenty-five percent?
Yes, the whole section, uh, one, A, B, C, and D, referencing the twenty-five percent demolition as an exception, less than twenty-five percent. And I think we were all in agreement with that.
Mm-hmm.
Number two, we will modify this further, removal and replacement subject to any required permits or exterior windows, doors, roof covering. We deleted foundation, but we are adding back finished exterior cladding, architectural details and other structural or decorative elements deemed by the Director of Planning and Committee of Preservation to be minor alterations. Uh, do we want to add in all the further details that we were talking about? Under demolition.
Yeah, I think those, those definitions should probably, here.
I mean, I think that these lists should be the same in both places.
Except for foundation, right?
Except for foundation.
Is there not going to be a minor foundation, or do you want to let?
Maybe I'll repair her.
You might have a repair, maybe we should leave the foundation.
Yeah. Okay.
I guess that makes sense. Because especially if you're going to do a seismic retrofit.
It's a ma- major repair, but, yeah.
But I mean.
Can we just put subject to any required permits, comma, removal and replacement of exterior? Somehow, I just, this, the, the grammar in this sentence is extremely, I.
Subject to removal.
Or do we want, do we just want to have a second sentence that the, this, this type of removal or replacement will be subject to any required permits? Otherwise required permits, is that what it's trying to say?
I believe it would be.
Otherwise required permits, yes.
So that, let's just make that a separate sentence.
So you want to take that out of, out of.
I just want to ta- take the phrase, subject to any required permits, and make a separate sentence that says.
But you want to do that number one as well, right?
Yeah, you can start it, subject to any required permits.
Removal, replacement of exterior.
Yeah, just, the way it's in there is just, it's not.
You're going to change it to one, two.
Yeah.
Like that, it's, it's in there, too.
Mm-hmm.
But it's at the end.
Yeah, subject, yeah, we can put it at the end like it is in one.
Yeah.
Just.
Okay.
It's grammar, it's.
It's important if it turns the meaning.
Yes, and to me, the meaning, it wasn't clear, the word is there, so.
Okay.
So did, I want to go back for clarity, um, we included in the demo portion of porches.
Architectural details.
Significant features, right?
Architectural details, porches, chimneys.
Does, did part of the, on the, the subject project, was that, I don't know, was it the dormer or was it the, the front projection that was minor alteration?
Right.
Would that be covered in this as considered demolition, then? Because that's what got the whole thing going anyway, was a misunderstanding on what was a minor alteration that it proceeded to, because that was part of the roof, I guess?
I think we would, because if we were taking out the twenty-five percent clause, less than twenty-five percent, then it should be covered.
So a- anything to do with, like, that element would have triggered demolition? That would not, would that have fallen to the minor?
No, if that was the only, if that had been the only change in remodeling or restoring this house that was made to the exterior, um, it, the, you know, front dormer area, and it was, um, being the same materials used for maintenance replacement do not alter the appearance, size, or character of the existing structure, I think it would have been an exception if that had been the.
Only thing, if that was the only thing they did.
But the, but the addition on the back blows it out, so, fair enough.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
We made it, made it the additional two, just until we got to page two. And we're going to, uh, put removal and replacement at the end of the, that new first sentence, or at the end of the sentence as number one. And we're adding the same, uh, language as found under the definition section.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yes. Yes.
And that's all the changes proposed. So essentially, what it did was remove the twenty-five percent exception and it requires a historic resources evaluation report.
Does any?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five years and older, and it's not limited to single-family and duplexes.
Correct, any structure.
Yeah. Does anyone in the audience want to make comments on this?
Good evening, I'm Barry Gold, four four one Ramona Avenue. Members of the Preserve Sierra Madre Steering Committee met last night to discuss the matter that is before you now. They share your frustration and your desire to protect our city's historical resources so that what happened at one twenty-six East Miramonte will not happen again elsewhere. We believe that the simplest and best solution is to eliminate the twenty-five percent construction exemption and re- and require a historical resource evaluation on all requests for discretionary demolition permits for homes that are seventy-five years old and older. This is part of the staff's proposal, which you have, and we support this proposal. After the evaluation, if a property is determined to have historical values, then the appropriate codes will take effect. If the property is not evaluated as historical, then the owners can demolish any part or the whole structure if they choose to. And by doing the evaluation before anything is started, just like is required now for removing twenty-six percent or more, you will avoid totally the problem that we just had. As to the penalties for demolishing a structure without a permit, the penalties we have now are not a deterrent. The members of the Preserve Sierra Madre Steering Committee trust that you will make changes to the penalties that will be much more effective in deterring people from violating our demolition codes. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all the many, many emails we received today.
I want, I want to point out two things that I've been aware of, living in Sierra Madre all these many years and different projects I've been involved with. And I know many of you know the Jameson Estate and what that property looked like and the houses that went in there. Do you all remember the little green, um, farm shack that faced on Grand View? No? There was a little green farm shack, was required to be moved, and it was moved, and it went down on Jameson Court. And you can now see the outline of the property where it sat. But it's not there. And it was probably more, um, characteristic of the early days of Sierra Madre in terms of what, where the workers lived. The Jameson Estate was way down on Highland, and then this little farm shack was up on the back end of the property on Grand View. But there was, I don't know, I do not remember the, the circumstances under which it was determined it should be protected and moved But there was, I don't know, I do not remember the circumstances under which it was determined it should be protected and moved, and set down on new foundation, and nice rock, uh, rock wall, and. Iron fencing is around it, but now it's just an empty space. So it, it was a very curious thing, and yet, at some point in time, somebody thought it was pretty important. And then I wanna share with you in terms of what this costs somebody, in terms of having to do an evaluation, even if they wanna tear down a shack. Or it's just a garage with doors that just fell off, I don't know if you know this little garage, it's almost a Marinanta High School, it's on the left-hand side, it had barn doors on it, that were sort of, now they're gone. You know, so, I mean, they were really falling off, so they would have fallen off just in their own due, due course anyway. But there's a lot of arrested decay, and, and there's no there, there after a while, which is sort of what you're facing with the Darling House. But in terms of the value in Sierra Madre, it's Sierra Madre that's the value. The lot is empty, or the house is torn down, or it's falling down, but whether you do this assessment and find out that it's historically to be preserved or not, still, the value is Sierra Madre. And that's what we were trying to, to, to help people understand when they come from somewhere else, or they say they love this house. I can remember somebody that wanted to buy a house in, in San, the Canyon, put up a house on a lot, cause his wife just loved it in the Canyon, they lived in San Marino, and you're going. Are you, you really want me to believe that story? Because it was on the market instantly, the last nail was driven in. So you've got this issue as well. And then Gina, there used to be a guy sitting in your seat, an old timer, he was a Golden Glove, Golden Gloves boxer, do you remember that? Planning Commissioner, what was his name? He was a crusty character, and one time, I sat in the audience when we were doing some Hillside Preservation at first. And somebody up on Sunrise Hill, which is above George Ennieti's house, twenty acres up there. And the people owned it, they were speculators from Virginia. And they, they sent their representatives here, and they wanted to get a four-lot split. And that's the way the tract map works, four by four by four, cause it doesn't trigger an environmental impact report if it's four or less. And then the builders come in and they only want four, but then you take away the fourth one, they go, oh, yeah. So glad to give it up, cause they only wanted three in the first place, so you, you watch people maneuver like this over, over time. Well, that guy that sat in your place, though, they didn't wanna, they didn't wanna have to build the road, they didn't wanna have to put in this, or this, or this, before they got the four-lot split. But the planning commission said, you have to tell us what you're gonna do, can you possibly do it? Why should we give you a four-lot split if you can't possibly do it? Oh, it's gonna cost us too much money. So that guy said, it's not our problem if you lose your shirt. Because we're here to protect the city of Sierra Madre, we're here to protect the hillsides, we wanna see the plan. So in effect, what you're trying to do here with this demolition permit is you wanna see the plan. Because the plan is really what is involved in saving Sierra Madre, or protecting Sierra Madre. All right, that's it.
Thank you.
The, the historical assessments, does the city keep a copy for every, every parcel that that, that it? So eventually, we will create a library? So if I buy a house from somebody else who's already done it, do I have to do it?
It's in the library, isn't it?
Then it's in the library, it's part, it becomes part of our public. We do keep a copy of it, it, right now, we haven't, I don't think, always sent them to the library, we have electronic file in the planning department, but that's certainly something we can do.
Good, that, if they were all in the library too, really.
Yeah, they're currently in the building permit file.
Yeah.
Most of those so far have not, not in the value.
Right.
It'd be useful if they all ended up in the library, you know? It is an important historical resource for the city.
Okay. That was.
We usually do that now, but.
Approval, but I, I think one of the things is, if, if we have reports that say it's not historic, that would be useful too. I mean, cause, you know, you always think, oh, we wanna make sure preserve the historic, but, you know, if, if, if there's a report that's already done. That could save somebody a lot of money.
That's what, that's what, that's what I'm referencing.
It's like the negative biopsy, right? You know, you want that information too.
I think most people are gonna come to the planning department, and then we would have that in our file, or permit file, so right away, they can see that. But we can have that placed at the library.
It'd be nice to have it for the library as well, I mean, just for the general.
Undundance is a friend.
It is a friend, yeah, exactly, yeah.
We actually had two other sheets that was provided on the dais, remember the calculation of fees and demolition permits ordinance? And Commissioner Hut had a couple of modifications to those two. We're basically saying the same thing, but we've got fifteen oh four, one-one-five demolition permits, and that is item J. And it's the penalty for demolition without a permit, and this is the existing ordinance, as written, any person for recorporation, abolishing a structure without a permit shall be guilty of a misdemeanor. And upon conviction, any such person shall be punishable by a fine of not more than one thousand dollars, or by imprisonment in the city jail. For not more than one hundred and eighty days, or both such fine and imprisonment. The new language now is added here to read additionally, in accordance with section fifteen point five, two point zero six, zero C, structures demolished without permits. Should not be awarded impact credits towards fees charged for future development.
Could you explain that?
Yeah, I don't know what it means.
And that goes back, kind of ties into the other one, calculation of fee. And deals with the public facilities fee, and item C is adding that same language. So it says, the existing impact credit for proj- for projects shall be the sum of the base amount that would be imposed on a project comprised of the structures that existed or the parcels. Comprising the project prior to the occurrence of the new project, I didn't write that, so. The new language is, no existing impact credit shall be allowed for structures demolished without required permits, so it's tying the two together, but.
Yeah, this really gets, this really gets into the whole thing of, when we get to the issue of penalties. And to me, it seemed like one easy place to start is to say, you have to, look, if you demo it illegally, you don't get a credit for it. Because if, if you buy a, an empty lot and you build a house, you have to pay, what is it now? Forty thousand?
About forty-three thousand.
Forty-three thousand dollar, uh, uh, impact fee, for, for a new house.
So that's like for the sewer and water and.
And parks and.
Yeah.
Not schools, that's a separate fee.
Yeah.
So, but if you have a house, and you demo it, and you build a new house, you don't have to pay that. Because you get, you get a credit for that house you demo. So, to me, it seems to make sense, well, if you demo it illegally, you don't get credit.
So you have to pay that impact fee, which is a lot of money. Excellent idea.
Great.
Thank you.
But it, that's, that's for single-family, i- if it's multi-family, it's a different fee. So if, like, you, like, demoed a fourplex, I don't know, was it like twenty thousand per?
It's per unit.
Twenty-two thousand dollars per unit.
It's about eighteen.
So it would be, you know, if you illegally demoed a fourplex, you'd lose eighty-eight thousand.
And is it, and is there one for a, a non-house, a non-residential building as well?
Commercial, and, yes, commercial.
Is it per square foot or something?
It's per thousand square feet of floor area. Commercial and office.
Or shed, it's like nothing, yeah, I think.
We pay you.
Like a historical wall, up in the canyon, somebody takes down one of the, the rock walls.
That wouldn't apply.
Okay.
Cause there's no fee for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think the, the issue of, of penalty is, is a complicated one, and one.
Well, that's a good start.
But this, to me, seemed like an, an easy place to at least do something.
And it's also, there's a nexus of connection between it, it's not just a random, it makes sense.
And hopefully, hopefully, it's legal.
I, no, I, I think that it's a, it's an approach I have not seen in other ordinances. I, I like it, I think it's creative, I think it is legal. And part of the problem with monetary penalties is, if someone's gonna demolish a historic structure because they wanna put something else up, they're happy to pay a thousand dollars. That's not a deterrent at all.
It's not even a slap on the wrist.
Forty-three thousand dollars, maybe more of a deterrent. And of course, the ultimate deterrent, but it only applies in our code to a listed structure, is what will make you put the whole thing back again. You know, with using similar materials, but, or if that's not possible, you just don't get to build anything for five years. We freeze your development for five years. That's already in our code. In the city of Pasadena, which has a similar provision, it's the same thing, five years for an historic structure, four years, four-year moratorium on your ability to, to develop. If it's for a potential, potentially historic structure, and then if it's not historic at all, but you demolish it without a permit, it's, you don't get to build anything for twelve months.
So what is potentially historic? Is potentially historic, say, anything in Sierra Madre that's seventy-five years or older?
Right, well, you know, it might have been a contributing factor, but it wasn't listed yet, and so it's, it's something that, it was a contender, and it just never got to.
So, I mean, in our case, if, if it's a building that's seventy-five years or older, and they didn't get the, the assess, historical assessment. Would that be considered potentially historic, if we had that in our code?
Well, that's, that's a tough call, because it's, as we're learning, it's difficult to do that historic assessment after the fact. When the potential structure is gone now.
I mean, to me, it seems.
The materials are gone.
To me, it seems that we really need a, a strong penalty in that case, cause that just happened.
Right, and I.
If, if the building is seventy-five years or older.
But one, and, one penalty is, you rebuild it. Put it back the way it was.
Yeah, but that's, that's, that's not, and I don't think that's an adequate penalty, I think, cause you, you have an issue there where you, you're reconstructing. Rather than preserving and rehabilitating. And, and that's a much different thing, I mean, you know, a lot of people talk about the Secretary of Interior Standards, but I think a lot of people don't really understand how that works. That the full title is Secretary of Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties, with guidelines for preserving, rehabilitating, restoring, and reconstructing historic buildings. And those are four separate treatments, they're not the same thing. And so, a- as we heard from the contractor last time, it's a lot easier just to demo and build straight new. But you're not gonna get the same thing, you're gonna get, make believe Disney history.
Yeah.
And so, if, 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 basically, what you're doing is, you're saying to somebody who, who doesn't really want to preserve historic fabric. We're giving you the option of taking an easy treatment, because the penalty is just do the lesser treatment. And so, I, I, I think, in some ways, if somebody demos a historic house, the best thing to do is say it's gone, and just build a new house. And, but, but assess that person really big penalties, so, so they don't want to do that.
And, and under the existing code, the city has that option. It doesn't have to choose, the, it doesn't have to choose the option to require the building to be reconstructed. It can choose the option of, um, moratorium on any development on that lot for five years. Which is quite a deterrent.
I'm also thinking that the contractor, if they have some skin in the game, the penalty should apply to the contractor as well as the, of, the owner. And that perhaps they're not allowed to do business in the city for five years.
Maybe it's reached too far.
Pushed too far.
Well, and.
It's a good idea, I think.
Yeah, they have, the contractor, I'm tired of hearing, we didn't know, I didn't know, it's a misunderstanding. Well, perhaps if we make them read the code, sign it, they will say, oh, this is what could happen to me. And, I mean, we have to be tough with these guys, because we're being made fools of.
If they were doing work for the city, we could debar them. We don't have the same latitude.
Can we take away their business license?
Take away their business license, that's what I mean.
We could do that, we could, we could say.
But then, don't they just build illegally?
The one thing that I, I don't like about, I mean, I prefer the monetary.
Oh, a monetary fine in there too.
You know, however we can structure that, and I think, John, what you've come up with is quite ingenious, so I think that's great. But my concern is the moratorium, like, it's possible we end up with, like, the scenario we have on Miramonte, where. Even though that's on the books, like, we could punish them by not having, not being able to do anything on the site. But it's like a punishment for everybody else too that lives around that, like, that, that thing is gonna, if we said, well, now you can't build anything for two years, or whatever it was. In the state it's in, it's just gonna stay like that, like, that's a bright.
That's right.
Unless.
Like, how is that punishment?
We, we need, we need, we need to, we need to have something to deal with partial demolition.
I don't think we would ever trigger that as a punishment in, in a situation like this.
I don't see it as.
I think if it was.
I'm sorry it upsets the neighbors, in theory. The neighbors should be mad at the homeowner, not the city. And that skeleton standing wherever it would be, would say to everybody, we enforce our codes. And this is what's gonna happen to you, if you screw up, you're gonna be stuck for a while.
Yeah, but that's easy to say.
There's another solution, no, there's another solution, if you, if, if you go around, if you go around Europe in a lot of the old buildings. The scaffolding around it has a fabric that has the representation of the building on the fabric, on, on the, on the scaffolding. So inside, there is a, there's construction taking place, there's all kinds of things, but the exterior looks to be a, a set, a movie set, for lack of a better concept. Of, this is what the building looks like, or used to look like.
Yeah.
And, and I would, if, if you wanna, I would impose the five years and say, and by the way, it has to, you have to.
That sounds like an attractive and nuisance.
Involved with that structure staying, like, from just the stick staying, to imminent fire danger, or just, like, it's like the.
I, I think what we need.
So, so do we have a, build a, that building that they wanna build and say, now you can't move in for five years?
It's not.
I think I'm okay with that.
No, I think what we need is.
Hold back the significant occupancy.
We need some sort of vehicle that allows the city to go in, where a place where people have partially demolished to, to create a, a health and safety risk and a nuisance. That the city can come in and complete demolition, or take what other, other steps are necessary to make it safe and, and remedy the nuisance, and then charge back the property owner. Because if you're a proper, if you're a neighbor, and I, I think, you know, I, I understand your point, I, I agree, but I, I don't think it's fair to the neighbor to, to look at those sticks. But if the neighbor looks at a vacant lot, you know, that, that's okay, that's not, that's not a health and safety thing, it's not gonna cause a fire, I mean, they said that they increased their fire insurance, it's not gonna fall over on them, it's not gonna have little kids go and play on it and get hurt, so.
And I think that, that provision is sort of meant for a situation where you have a complete demolition.
Right.
Right? There's nothing really there to become, you know, a problem, but in a partial situation, which we have, and could foreseeably have other situations like that. That's, to me, that, that's the last thing you wanna do.
Is what, tear it all, tear the rest of it down?
No, to have a moratorium, like, don't touch that property, like, for the next five years.
I, I, I think that.
In a partial situation.
I mean, I think that in, in the case of a complete demolition, that a, a building moratorium makes a lot of sense. It's a really, uh, that's a really strong disincentive.
Well, then, we need to differentiate.
But, but in a case, yes, but in a case of a, a partial demolition, where a structure is still there and could conceivably be rehabilitated, or, 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 you know, rebuilt, or something. That should be done, because if you just let it sit, it's gonna be, it's just gonna rot to nothing, and you'll end up with nothing there. So that if, 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 if rebuilding or rehabilitation of it is gonna happen, that needs to happen ASAP. Because if you just leave it sit, you'll end up with nothing, and you may as well have a complete demolition.
So what, where, where does the penalty come in?
Where's the penalty coming, yeah, that's.
If, 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 if I were to, if I come and ask for after-the-fact forgiveness, I pay, pay an additional fee for the, for the permit, correct?
Yes.
And then, and that additional fee is set by council? Yes, it's, it would be.
Like double.
It's double, well, why does it have, can it be more than double?
I've seen it as high as triple in some jurisdictions, but not higher.
Nothing.
Why not?
For what permit, the, the demo permit?
No, if I demo, if I demo, and I come into, if I come to the city and ask for permit after the fact, I pay twice, I pay double. So why can't it be five times?
I, you know, I, I will say that, I, I believe that it's in the building code, the state building code, the doubling of, of fees as a penalty. And the only place I've seen it tripled is with the charter city, that, whether it was legal or not, they, they did it.
We're general.
Is the building.
For the demo permit, it, it doesn't.
Is the building code the minimum?
Say that for the demolition permit.
It does, okay. Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, it's nothing. Yeah, it's nothing.
Yeah, so triple it. Oh, no. Yeah.
That'll do it.
Well, I.
And I saw. I mean, I also think that there needs to be more of a, a separate, uh, you know, some way of addressing this issue of, of the potentially historic building where the, the, the historic survey was not done. And that should be a, a, equally severe penalty to the actual, to, to, you know, that, that needs to be an enhancement.
Well, I think.
A big enhancement of the penalty.
This is another issue when, when you get to the whole concept of, of rebuilding. If, if you're gonna have someone who illegally demolishes a building, you know, do they have as-built plans? Did, you know, where did they take the historic fabric? They're gonna re- rebuild like it was and it's not gonna really be very close like to what it was.
Yeah.
And, and how are they gonna even know? We've got a couple of pictures of it, you know? So that, that really doesn't work.
Yeah.
And, and I guess.
What is the?
So what does work?
What does work? I'm, I've been thinking about it a lot this week.
And, and I think, you know, we talked about the emails. We get a lot of emails. And this was a big thing that a lot of people talked about. And, and I think it's true. You, that, that, um, you know, you, you need a big penalty. And so, I, I guess one issue is, to me, if someone did a partial demolition, you know, what, how quickly could the city move in if there was some vehicle for that? Is, or is it something where, where, in code enforcement land and we sue and it could take months or years to do anything about?
And then, and then they, they, they want to.
Would be a little bit of enforcement.
They want to take months and years because then it rots. But is there some way that we can require some kind of protective fabric over the, what's left so that it doesn't rot away in the meantime?
Sure.
Potato.
Of protective.
Short of like sheathing the whole thing in plywood and putting a finish. I mean, like, any fabric. And we're not talking like three months. We're talking years potentially.
No, but I mean, I mean.
Are you gonna trust the person who illegally demolished the house to put that sheathing on in a way that's not gonna demolish more?
No, but I mean, is there some, I mean, I'm just wondering, because this is like, because of the way the system operates, it's likely to take a long time, what can be done to protect what's left and, and, and save it?
Well, the best way to protect what's left is to take it apart and save it, you know, to be reinstalled, you know? Like, in that prime example, the sticks that are there, there's some really good lumber. I mean, you know, I mean, I took a peek today
I was up there today.
and touched a bunch of it. And it's like, but the only way to preserve it is to take it and then reuse it at a later date, you know, but.
But a lot of it's already in the landfill, right?
I'm just talking about what's there.
Right, but I mean, this is, you know, this is where we caught. And, and so, I, I think one of the issues you're gonna have is that there, there are gonna be some people who just totally de- demolish without any kind of permit and just do it, right? And then those are gonna catch the end when it's already done.
Mm-hmm.
But I think it's gonna be more likely that we're gonna get a number of these that are, you know, partial demolition because people sort of get into it and, "I'm just doing a repair. It's just minor." And then, you know, when you open up an old house, a lot of times minor things sort of morph into big things. And so, this is sort of the natural course of these things. And, and, you know, and that's one of the, the big drawbacks of not having the information upfront.
Can the city hire someone to do the historical assessment and, and bill the homeowner?
It, it could. That's not the way the, the ordinance was set up.
Right.
We have the list and we, we kinda want the property owner to be responsible for that, not just paying for it, but also to own the, you know, the product, that it wasn't influenced by the city to, with a certain outcome.
Ah, okay. Cause, you know, if he's paying for the product, he can also ask, say, "Well, you know, let's ignore." I mean, it may, you, we, we, maybe, you may get two different results.
Well, it's possible, but that's why we have a, a lit, an approved list of qualified.
And trustworthy.
Yes.
But to, to your point, John, wouldn't it, we would have the information by, I mean, moving forward. Doesn't matter how much you, you decided to demolish. If it's older than X, we're getting a historical survey.
But if you do it without a permit, you don't know that they're doing it and there won't be a survey possibly.
Well, but that's a whole different thing. Like, that's.
Or, or if it's a minor that, that runs amok, I, I don't know. He- here's one of the things.
There's no minor though, right? There's no minor demolition.
If, I mean, to me, it seems like w- we are really trying to back into a thing because we don't just do it the right way. There, there's one right way to do this. We do a citywide historic survey. Then, then we know upfront. And if you go to South Pass, you go to Pass, you go to Monrovia, this is the way other cities do it. And I wanna buy a property, I go to the city and I say, "Is this on the list?" And it is or it's not. Or it's, some do the contributing where it's sort of in between and there's a lesser thing. But you get an idea of what it is before you buy it. And, and that's, I think, the key. Because the people who are gonna buy a historic house and want to rehabilitate it are the people who really care about that kinda thing. And they're gonna go in with full knowledge. The people who want to just demo the thing and build the new development that's gonna make the quick buck are gonna go to the city. They're gonna get that information. They're gonna go, "Up, I'm going to the next house." And so the problem you have is the person who's gonna be doing this survey is the person who's already bought the house. And so, you're not gonna pre-select the, the, the person who's doing the work based on the knowledge ahead of time. And, you know, we got an, one of the emails we got, I don't know how much we can, maybe I shouldn't go into the other house. But, you know, if, if there's knowledge before someone can even buy it, about whether it's historic or not, you're gonna pre-select for the kinda person who would want to buy a historic house as opposed to someone who's looking for a workaround where it's, "Oh, don't worry. I'll reconstruct it just as good as new." And it's a lot easier to demo the whole thing cause then I can make it nice and straight. And it's like, well, that misses the point of what a historic property is.
Then initially, we should put all houses seventy-five years or older on a list and say, "This is the list of ones that we need to have information about. You know, if you buy this ha, if you buy any one of these houses, that's your, that's the list." Whether, what we know about them, each one is different, but this is the list. And if you're gonna buy one of them, be, be advised to any, any kind of construction or.
Yeah, but, but you and I both know, there's plenty of houses in town that are seventy-five years or more that are not historic.
Then, then, no problem. Prove it.
No, no, I, I understand that. But I'm, look, here's the mentality of, of the, the, the quick buck kind. Look, we know there's some of these. It's just an issue of getting the right one. And then, well, if I know there's some, I can work a deal or I can do something. Whereas if you have a very small list because you actually went out and surveyed, then you go, "Why would I wanna mess with that when I can go make a quick buck somewhere else?"
I mean, I have, I have, I, I think a, a, a citywide historic survey would be fantastic. But, but it's not exactly the purview of us, is it?
That's the council's call.
It's the council's call to do something like that. And I, I certainly would, would advocate recommending for that in addition to whatever else we come up with. But, um, and that would, you know, that's expensive as well. I mean, I, I mean, that's, that's an issue in getting that done, is money. And we know how rich Sierra Madre is. And I'm not saying it's a bad idea. But, but in their, I don't see that happening immediately. And in the interim, we need, we need something, something. And I think.
I think the whole in your, the existing ordinance regarding penalties is that the, the most, the strictest penalty, which is the five years you don't get to build, um, or alternatively, we make you reconstruct the whole thing the way it was, only applies to an historic structure. What we need is, um, a provision that applies to, uh.
Potentially historic.
Potentially historic or.
Or AKA over seventy-five, right?
Over seventy-five years old regardless of whether you had a, uh, well, over seventy-five years old. I don't wanna say regardless because then the.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I just think that.
I'm not gonna get that historic permit because that's.
Yeah, because, I mean, I think that the definition of potentially historic is any building over seventy-five years old. Any building over seventy-five years old has to have this survey done. If you don't have the survey done, then personally, I think the penalty should be exactly the same as if you demolished it.
And you could make it, we could, uh, we could.
For a starter anyway.
Change that to say for listed structures and for any structure that's over seventy-five years old.
Potentially.
And then this, um, provision would apply. Uh, um, that's one alternative. Another alternative is to do what Pasadena did. And, uh, it's, it's not as strong, but it, it's tiered. And, um, so for eligible resources, they aren't actually listed, but they're potentially eligible. It's four-year moratorium. And for everything else, um, if you didn't get a, a demolition permit, um, it's one year. You can't do anything for one year.
Is that one year on the structure or the property?
It's, um, I'll read it to you. If a structure not classified as designated or eligible historic structure or non-contributing building, in other words, it's everything else, is demolished without a certificate of appropriateness or demolition permit, no building or construction-related permits shall be issued for a period of twelve months. This penalty applies solely to illegal demolition of primary structures on a site and does not apply to accessory structures. They threw that in, but you wouldn't have it.
But I, I guess the, the thing is, it's, it's, they're talking about the whole property. So if you illegally demolished an accessory structure, then you couldn't get a permit on the primary structure.
That's what they're saying, yeah.
I would make that, I would make that stronger. I mean, I would make it more than twelve months.
But how does that, how do we parse out like partial demolitions?
Well, yeah, that's, the partial demolition is the big issue for me.
You don't want that stuff standing.
No.
The other, the other issue on, on some of this stuff is, i- if you have a moratorium, what happens to the permits that they have approved? Do, do those toll or do they have to start over?
Because they, they, they have a, a sunset on them, don't they? They have to be.
Yeah, they, they are self-expiring.
Right, so they'd have to start over again.
Wouldn't also that the illegal demolition be a violation of the condition of approval? I mean, isn't the first condition of approval for, like, everything we approve, you have to comply with Sierra Madre codes?
Sure.
And so we could pull the, I mean, is that on a building permit too or just discretionary?
That's on anything. I mean, you always have to comply. I mean, you have to comply.
You can void all other permits.
So we could.
And start over.
Void all the existing permits. I mean, that's square one.
Mm-hmm. Start over from scratch.
Is that a discretion of the director to do that or does it have to be in code?
Oh, I think you'd have to put it in code.
Okay.
But, uh.
But how do you, I guess.
Apparently you have, i- i- in order to demo, you have a building permit already, like a development permit, hand in hand.
That is a requirement of the ordinance, yes.
But if you violate a condition of approval, it goes back to the reviewing body that approved it, right?
Yes, for potential revocation or, or other action or, but that's, that's correct. If you violated the condition of approval, act, some kind of form of action will be taken depending on the nature of the condition. If it's something that falls into, if it's a violation that also is like, um, a code violation where it might be corrected through abatement or administrative penalty, we'd approach it that way as opposed to coming back to.
Well, could we, you know, say that if you, if this particular condition is not followed, then the, the, you know, the approval is gone and you have to start over? I mean, can you make that a?
Well, in a, in a way, I think, Terry, there is a condition that says that you are required to build according to what's approved.
Right.
And if it's substantially not in conformance, then it could be null and void. The CP could be null and void.
Well, you'd have to come back. That's right.
You'd have to come back.
You have no authority to build something that.
That is, that has not been approved, including the demolition.
You know, if, if it's demolished without a permit, it, the, 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 the permits for the new construction are null and void.
This would come into a place where somebody got an approval, um, and an exception, right? Because if, the, which is what happened similarly to, to the, um, the Miramonte house. But if somebody did a, a historic review, then they're complying. I guess they could demolish beyond the scope of what they were approved.
If the historic evaluation says concluded that it does not have historic value, but if it does conclude that it has historic value and it demoed more than an exception allows.
Right.
Then yes.
But you, you could have a thing where, you know, um, there's three structures on a property and the historic report says two of them are historic and one is not, cause it's, you know, the later tough shed or whatever. And so, we approve the demolition of that and a CUP to do some addition. And instead of demolishing the, the one that's not historic, they demolish the historic. So I guess it's possible you could get to that. But it's really, if we get rid of the twenty-five percent exception, it's gonna be a lot less likely that you'd get to that kinda situation.
Yes. We wouldn't have had this problem.
Yes.
We had not been nice and offered a twenty-five percent exception.
But going back to this, a, a partial situation, there is no real penalty that can be imposed other than a fiscal penalty of some sort, right?
I, yeah, I mean, if you want to save what's left, the only way to save what's left is to proceed with the construction.
Right.
Well, yeah.
You know?
Reconstruction.
I mean, to, to, to proceed with the reconstruction. But I think there needs, i- if, if the only penalty we can think of is a fiscal penalty, then there has to be a really substantial fiscal penalty to show that we mean business here. I, I mean, I don't know what other, because.
Is that im- imposing or, cause?
Right.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, because our demolition permit ties, uh, an approved site plan. And, you know, you can't demolish something unless you show us and get approved what you're going to put in its place. So if you demolish something that you weren't allowed to, not only are you not going to get the credit, but perhaps the, um, building permit that gets issued to you is gonna be double the fee.
Yeah, but that's still peanuts.
Is there a way to do something like?
It's, it's, it's more expensive than you think, but it's not enough to really deter someone.
But can you do something like, almost like a, not a deposit, but I mean, construction is done all the time where you put an amount against something and if that's completed or fulfilled, then that's either returned to you.
You can require a surety bond.
Like, like, so you're gonna de, de, you're gonna go for this discretionary demo, but instead, you're gonna put up like five or ten thousand or whatever. And if you were in the process to illegally demolish or partially demolish, then you lose that. Like, you don't, you don't get that. You're basically paying a penalty.
Well, then you're making everyone buy a surety bond who may have not have ever violated the law.
But they're gonna get, I mean, they're not, if they follow the law.
It's like a deposit they get back.
It's like, they're not gonna lose the money.
Right.
But if they do violate.
The surety bonds cost a lot of money.
They are expensive.
And, and, you know, single-family surety bond sounds pretty.
Well, not even a surety bond, like, can it be like a deposit? Like, you can put money upfront and then you get it back if, if everything is fine, you know, with.
It would, we have the same problem though. It would have to be an awful lot of money to really be a deterrent. Otherwise, it's just the price of doing business. If you wanna get rid of that house.
If you put an awful lot of money, then you've really penalized people who are complying.
Right.
It's like, oh, I just put a hundred grand in the city's pocket for, you know, a year while I do this sort of minor construction on my old house. That's, that's tough.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's.
Is our, is our problem, it sounds like we have a, a, a process for a total demolition.
Right.
Our problem is the partial demolition.
But even the total, we don't have a, a penalty. I, I guess we've got the time penalty.
We got the five years, right?
Yeah, we do. That's already.
We've got the five years and we've got your recommended penalty, which is about the.
Historic. I guess we could put that onto the older ones.
And, and if you want, we can, um, expand that to seventy-five years or older, listed or seventy-five years or older.
Okay, but, so now we have, but we have, in this condition, now we have, if we're, if we're looking at, say, a house that is only partially demoed, we have to make a decision, is there, is it salvageable or not?
Mm-hmm.
You know, and of course, the applicant will tell us, "Oh, yeah, I can make this into, you know, the most beautiful place." And we have to decide whether we, do we believe them or can, or should we just say, "No, you've, you've destroyed it. We're gonna tear the rest out and wait five years."
My inclination, what I, what I would love if we could do is to say.
How can we do that?
I think we're almost there. I think we, that we, I'll answer his question really quick.
Yeah.
I think that we could do that. Um, and, and instead of, right now, the choices for, um, demolition of an historic resource without the required permits are, you rebuild it completely within one year. We rebuild it with one, within one year and you pay for it. Or, um, Or, um, you don't do anything for five years. So if you have a situation where, um, it's partially destroyed, I think it would go something like this. We get the following choices. Um, again, we have the choice, you rebuild it within one year, you tear what's down, what's, what's left because we determined that it's not salvageable and you build nothing for five years. Or we tear it down and, um, and you pay us for that cost. We put a lien against your property.
And five years.
And, and you build nothing for five years.
What happens if they don't build it in fi- in a year? If they don't finish it?
And we finish it.
Then we could finish it.
And build it.
And you get a lien against the property.
Yeah, but, but in order to do the finishing or the demo, aren't, aren't, aren't we gonna have to go through like code enforcement? I mean, you, we can't just, we can't just decide, we're gonna do this and the next day be out there.
No, you'd have to go through code enforcement. You'd have to get, that's why I'm, I'm right, I'm, even though it's in our code, it is probably not the one I would ever recommend where the city, for lots of reasons, you can always already imagine what they are. That the city went and it built the whole house for you. Here's your house. And now we've got the potential of construction defects and everybody don't want that. So although that's a remedy, I would never recommend using it. But we could require that they completely rebuild it. And, um, this is when we would get the surety bond upfront for the cost of
Of the, the whole rebuilding.
Rebuilding the whole house. And that's to make sure that they do.
This is what I think. This is, this, this is what, assuming you have any evidence at all of what the house looked like. I mean, we have some pictures of what the inside, you make them rebuild it to what it was like before, right? Not what they were planning on building it into.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that they can't, they can't, and this would mean they can't build the addition on.
The addition or the other stuff, no.
They can't build the addition on. They can go back to the way it was with, with, you know, re- re- rebuilding the historical architectural details. And then they can't make the addition. To Kerncon, they can't make the addition.
But then what you're doing is you're having a person who illegally demolished a historic structure in charge of the rebuilding. Do you think they're gonna do a good job? And then when they don't do a good job, but it's habitable, what are we gonna do?
But I mean, you could, I mean, I, I think the thing that has to happen.
They're gonna, they own it. They have to deal with it. When it's done, it's their, it's gonna be theirs.
I mean, the thing that has to happen is that the, the, the per, the, the, the conditional use permit for the addition is revoked.
Yes, that's a, I mean, there are lo- we could, there are layers of consequences that will befall you for, um, illegally demolishing when the demolition was part of a, you know, an approved plan.
So if there's an approved plan and division and this illegal demolition is part of it, the approved plan evaporates. It doesn't exist anymore. You have to start over.
I would like to see that. Okay, you've, you violated the first tenant, which is you're gonna abide by the rules. And now we're gonna start over at zero.
Right.
And so all the fee, you pay the fees again, start over. So it's gonna, you know, essentially double the whatever the cost to the city is.
But you start over after the moratorium.
Yes, sure, yes.
And you don't even get a process during that time.
Right, yeah.
But.
But then what happens to what's left?
I don't want the moratorium in a partial situation.
Then we tell them to, go ahead, take it down to nothing.
Uh, right, that, that's right. If, if it's a partial, that's one of the options is you rebuild it or you take it down for, to nothing and you do nothing for five years.
I think you'd have to complete the demolition.
Yeah, but you're gonna have situations where.
It's not demolition.
Yeah, I mean, the, the demolition is pretty minor. I mean, co- are, what we're talking about now, without the exceptions, you could have very minor demolition and violate the ordinance, right? And you're not gonna have anybody demo their house for that.
No.
We wouldn't do that.
Plus, we wouldn't want it.
But you're not also gonna just have them sit there for five years and not do anything else.
Well, then who gets to make the decision? We're looking at a partial de- demolition, then, then is it this body that can go to make the decision and go thumbs up, thumbs down?
It would have to be.
I would say yes, because this body originally approved the plan for the, the site plan, the, the replacement structure. Um, or if they didn't bother to follow the process at all, they just demolished it up from, because you, you know, in order to even be considered for a demolition permit, you have to show what the replacement structure is going to look like and get that approved. So I think it would be this body would make that call. And that's the way I would draft it.
So just thinking through that, this body shows up, the, the applicant is gonna make the, the case that, oh, no, this is all very salvageable. This is all very, you know, I, I personally would want to make sure that the, the code enforcement buildings, you know, the inspector is, is part of the visit.
Right. Which is what we're in the process of doing now.
Right, exactly. And, but then we can confer and decide, no, you've gone too far. This is not habitable, salvageable. Uh, it no longer has the historical significance. You've destroyed that part of it. So what we want to do is just scrap the whole thing, take it all down and five years from now, come back with us for your plan of what you want to do with this vacant lot.
I think that's right. That's not too different than what would happen to you if you, if you tore down a listed historic structure. Same thing. If you demolished it completely, um, we could require that you rebuild it or we could say it stays for five years. If you demolished it, um, partially, uh, same thing. We could require that you build, rebuild what's left or we could say, no, you're not building anything for five years. And in fact, um, for safety, uh, uh, reasons and the fact that you've destroyed it, there's nothing left to rebuild in our view, remove the rest of it and it sits for five years. I think that you could do that.
If it sits for five years, that goes with the property, not with the owner. If they sell it, does it still have to sit for the entire five years?
Yeah, no, that we'd.
Yeah.
Could, could we require th- them to complete demolition to, to a point? Um, and then do some reconstruction so you have like a part that's habitable? Like, you know, you could imagine a house that's, they just demoed a wing or something. And so your partial demolition, you, you would never ask for the whole house to be demoed.
Would hope not.
But, you know, I mean.
Protect what's left.
Right, right. I mean, just, well, just make it, I, I guess I'm wanting to get now is how much leeway would, where there's this body account, with this city, let's just generally, the city have to say, okay, you've demoed partially this part, this is what we want you to do.
Yeah. What authority do we have on that?
I mean, it's, at what point where the, does the applicant say, you can't tell me what to do with my property?
That's, yeah, at, yeah, the answer to that question, it's gonna depend on what kind of an entitlement process they were involved with in the first place. If there was one, if we had something to hang conditions on. I mean, it's one thing, uh, what I was, what I've been speaking to are actual penalties that were, have been written into your code. They're there now, um, for the end game. After the bad thing has already happened, now what? But if we're talking about someone who just, you know, goes out over a weekend and, um, takes out a portion of their seventy-five-year-old house, um, and, you know, closes it off and then comes, you know, they now think, well, I'm gonna build an extension or whatever, for whatever reason. I don't know why anybody would demolish part of a house, but, unless they were gonna build onto it. Then in order for the, you to, um, say, no, you can't, or we're not gonna issue the p- permit or et cetera, they would have to appear before you for some kind of an entitlement. And that's when I think that you could impose conditions like that. Otherwise, I'd like to.
What if they didn't need an entitlement? I mean.
Then unless we can fit them within the categories we've been speaking to, I, I think we can't get too creative on what the penalties are. One size kind of has to fit all. And, and I know we, we've been going through hypotheticals.
Right.
Say, well, what would we do here? But I think it really, it really comes down to the city has a couple of choices. And the city makes the call, not the property owner. We can make you rebuild it, um, if it's only partially destroyed and we think it's too far gone to be salvageable. We can make you remove what's left because that's a safety issue. And, um, and, or we can make you rebuild it. Or we can not make you rebuild it and, uh, make you remove what's left and, and you do nothing for five years.
And, and that's.
And we need to make sure that that's actually, I think we also record something against the property so that it, that, that has real teeth.
So if they partially demolished a, an accessory structure, we could require them to completely demolish that, but not, not the rest of the house or not the, but, but then we could say, and you can't do anything on the prop, the whole property for five years.
I think so.
And then what, what about just a monetary penalty? Because we have this.
Thousand dollars is all you can do.
That's.
More than that exceeds the, by law, the amount that you can impose for a criminal penalty and that's a thousand dollars for a misdemeanor.
And so, and that also is a criminal penalty.
Right.
So that w- we couldn't do that. That was, that's a district attorney, right?
That is, but that's the most you can do. What, now, what, what you have the authority to do without a district attorney is what we call an administrative citation. It's not, it's not criminal in nature. It just feels like it because you're paying money. That's a code enforcement issue where, um, we have to go through the process with code enforcement. You get the notices and are told what you need to do to correct the problem. And then if you don't correct it, then the penalties come. And technically, those penalties can, um, apply each and every day that you haven't corrected the violation. So those can add up to greater than a thousand dollars over time.
What is.
Because isn't there a, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, what type of would be required to send somebody to jail for a hundred and eighty days?
Conviction of a misdemeanor. And we would have to actually prosecute it. That would actually be a, and I'd have to get, actually get permission from the district attorney to prosecute a misdemeanor because that falls within the jurisdiction of the district attorney.
So if somebody demoed a historic property, we would have the option of doing that?
Yes, we, we have that option now.
Then we have to build a jail to put them in.
Yeah, right, as a city jail. They get to stay in the, in the bed and breakfast. So back to this issue of the partial demolition.
Can I just ask you one?
Yeah, yeah.
But the district attorney has the discretion to say no.
The district attorney can say no.
So we could go to the district attorney's office and say.
Probably would.
This, this person did this. They're guilty and the district attorney say, I got better things to do.
Yeah.
Likely what would happen, although the district attorney might want us, might say, if you wanna spend your time doing it, I'll grant you permission or authority to do so.
But then it would cost us a fortune to do it.
It would, um, it, it's, criminal prosecution is not as expensive as civil litigation, but you don't get your money back.
Yeah.
You get a thousand dollars.
I'm pretty sure it costs more than that.
And, and I, and at the end of the day, it's up to the judge as to whether the penalty is jail time or the thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah. So, and the judge is probably not gonna give him jail time.
Or maybe picking up, um, trash on.
The sign at the freeway.
A lot of trash for a long time.
Right, for six months.
Yeah. So let me, let me ask about this issue of partial demolition. So someone, someone applies, someone does partial demolition without any permission at all. They just go do it. And they get found out.
Of the seventy-five-year-old house.
Of the seventy-five-year-old house. We could require that they tear it down or that they build it back to the way it was, as close as you can.
We have that authority now.
And could we put a limit on this, says you're not allowed to build anything additional or add any additions onto this house for five years? I mean, they might not want to do that anyway, but chances are if they were tearing it down, they wanted to build something else there, right?
Uh, right.
Can we say, okay, put it back and you cannot do anything else for five years?
We, um, the way that our code is, yes, if we tweak the code.
Yeah, I mean, could we tweak the code that way so that we add that on?
Yes.
And if they have a CUP and they partially demolished something, then we could say, you have to put it back, but you can't build the, whatever you had the CUP for, you can't do that now for five years.
I like that because it, it derails the plan that they used to execute the maneuver. Because the.
So that they have to go back to the way it was and they can't go forward with it.
They have, they have to start over again at zero as opposed to, oh, well, this is just a little bump in the road on my grand vision of, you know, replacing this with something better or that I can make more money on.
So if you, if you ask for a CUP, the CUP is now evaporated.
Right.
You can't do anything and you have to start all over from scratch.
With a whole new set of fees to, with a, with a new project.
And you can't do it now. You have to wait.
Right.
And in the meantime, you have to build it back.
Four years, five years?
Yeah.
Five?
Five years.
Five years.
Yeah.
Um, I, I have another question on.
I mean, make it as bad as totally tearing it down.
Our ability to assess fees as opposed to fines. If somebody demolishes partially or completely, um, a house that's more than seventy-five years old, could we assess an in lieu fee of the average cost of what a historic assessment would have been so the city can start a fund to do a citywide historic survey? Or to fund, or to fund education programs so other property owners know that they're not supposed to do that?
He's good.
I'm gonna have to think about that because, um, it's, it doesn't really look like an AB sixteen-hundred fee because you're not getting something for it.
Well, we could make them do the report even though there's nothing left to do.
But, but we, we went around this, the whole issue before about the, the what-if report and.
But they still have to pay for it. I mean, at least there's the penalty of them having to pay for it.
But the other thing is we've got a, we've got a small list and a lot of them aren't gonna waste their time doing this. And really, it's gonna say, oh, there's nothing left. That's what, that's what the report is gonna be, right? So if we could use the money for something else, like to do some other kind of historic surveys, to do educational program, I don't know, something.
Well, I will tell you that you can use your administrative penalty money for anything you want to use it for. That's not source-controlled money. Although normally it does go back to the department that does the work to, um, recover the money. But, uh, that does not mean that it couldn't be put into a fund for that purpose.
All right, it's eleven o'clock.
It is.
It is.
It's more like a planted nut tree.
Yes, it's eleven o'clock, which means I'm getting really stupid. I don't know about anyone else at the table.
Where did this land though?
So, um, we're gonna have to come back to this clearly.
We're a little closer, I think.
Yeah, and we have, we made.
And I think we got some information that we can use sooner, more than later.
So I think I, it would be nice to agenda this again sooner, as soon as we can. Because I think we're kind of, it's gonna take, it's, you know, it's taken us some time to just hash it out, but I think we will come to something good. And we, we can think about it some more and.
Letitia might have a lot more emails for us.
Right. With regard to the emails, when people send those emails, they go into the official record.
Yes.
Right? Um, but I think a lot of the emails weren't specific about what they were emailing about. And so, because this is what we're talking about now, but I think there may be a lot of people who actually intended to email more specifically about the house on Miramonte. And so, did, I guess one question is, do we have the authority to put those emails in both records? Or should we just tell everybody, look, the email that you sent was for this item and if you want it to go into the record for the, the specific Miramonte project, you, you need to send a new email?
Well, can we, because we are in possession of them, say, I, I, I have received these emails and I want to put them in the record for the other guy?
I think that they automatically come into the record. And they come into the record either as, um, comment on, on non-agenda or on this agenda item. Either way, the person who wrote it intended for you all to see it and have it in the record for this evening. So I think they are in the record.
Well, I mean, we'd like to get it, if we want it to be in the record about the other item as well.
Like, at our next meeting, when the Miramonte thing comes up, that, for that specific project, because I think a lo- a lot of the emails, to me, they, they weren't really talking about code.
Right.
Restructure the code. They were talking about what we should do about that one house. Do they need to resend those emails? That's the base, but they should.
If they want that comment, if they want their comments to be in the record for. If they want that comment, if they want their comments to be in the record for that house, when that comes back before you, they will need to resubmit them or enhanced comments as they wish.
Okay.
How should we personally get in touch with these people and say, who's received this for?
We just need to send it, send.
I think they came as a result of a notification by a certain group and I'm sure that group will be happy to re-notify their people to do it again.
Leslie, Leslie, just look up there and let them all know.
Send them again. All right, any last comments on this and we'll come back to it and I'm sure we're gonna come up with something nice and strict, um, in the end. Barbara, do you have anything else to say to us on an item not on this agenda?
Well, it's not quite on the agenda.
Well, if it's on the agenda, you can't talk now.
Give more, more thought. What differentiates between being on the state historical registry versus what Sir Monry is requiring for historical history to go into the library? Those are two really major things to give you guys more thought as you go to sleep.
Thank you. Any comments from the commissioners? No, we're used up, staff.
We have, um, a couple of items that will be scheduled for our next meeting, which is taking place on December 1st. One of them is the continued public hearing, 126 East Miramonte, the discretionary demolition permit. And a second one is a, also a discretionary demolition permit. But it's in the canyon at, uh, 768 Widdlin Drive. It has a, a, a number of other entitlements associated with it. It's, uh, also includes a variance in a minor conditional use permit.
And it's before the fact.
It's for a new, it's a demolition of an existing house and renew house.
Okay. All right.
I put on my first fire, it's your monitor's in that house.
And given that, we will adjourn this meeting.